There we go. Welcome to the city council meeting tonight. We are in the council chambers at City Hall, Town West State Street. Today's date is January 27, 2020, and the time is 5:30 PM. Now that we're called to order, let me give a notice to the public that the mayor and council welcome comment from the public during the discussion of any of the agenda items. If you want to comment, you're required to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit your time to three minutes so that others may have the opportunity to speak as well. Speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council and not to any councilor specifically. It's at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. For those who are able, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Goudy?
Here.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Weren?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Thank you. We're all present, and I thank Consulor Weren for doing this remotely. She's home with a sick child, and we thought it might be better for her to stay with the child and not be here tonight. It is now time for mayor, council, and administrative comments, but before that, we have a recognition or two to do.
Thank you very much. Chris Jones, Support Services Captain for the Police Department. Before we get started with the recognition, I was wondering if I could have just a moment of time to talk about the Police Citizens Academy?
Absolutely.
Thank you. The Marshalltown Police Department currently has our opening, are taking applications for Police Citizens Academy, which starts on March 17, St. Patrick's Day. It runs 10 weeks, three hours every Tuesday until May 19. And the community or the council, if you haven't had an opportunity to participate, get an opportunity to see the inside workings of our police department, get to meet some of our staff, great staff, and find out some of the specialty operations that we provide to the community. If you had an opportunity to do it in the past, I've received great feedback, both from previous council members but also public members. We are looking to take 25 to 30 applications, so the faster you get your application in, the better. So if you have any questions, I did put some applications over on the table. There's probably only about 12 or so. I did put my business card there. If you have any questions, you can give me a call, or if you can email me, and I'll email out an application. And then I did put some flyers there that kind of talk about the topics that are available, and some of the timelines, and a little bit of the history of our Citizens Academy. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a great program. And everybody that I've talked to that has gone through it has been glad that they did.
Come on up, Larry. I get an opportunity to introduce one of our newest reserve officers, Larry Lubert. Two years ago, January 2018, I had an opportunity to come in front of you and ask and review his application to be a reserve officer. Throughout that entire process, I've had an outstanding opportunity to work with Larry, work through the training that he has been through, and he has done an outstanding job. So two years later, we're here to add him to the fifth member of our police reserve unit. Five members seems like it's a small number, but in order to become a reserve officer in the state of Iowa, it requires 80 hours of classroom training, 32 topics that are actually tested to be able to pass. After you've passed all of those, you put in 46 hours of use-of-force training, firearms training, ASV training, OC training, just like a regular officer. You do 40 hours of in-service ride-along training and 150 hours of regular in-service training. It is a huge commitment, and Larry has been through that entire process. He is not smiling now, but I'll tell you what. When I've worked with him, it's absolutely amazing. He makes my day every time that we have contact with one another. So he, if anything, has kept me in line throughout the process, calls me on a regular basis to make sure I'm doing my job, but has been an outstanding member. I'm very looking forward to having him on our department. He will start training, just like a regular officer, this month after this meeting, and from the department's standpoint, I know he's going to be an exceptional member of our reserve service. Our police reserves typically supplement some of our regular manpower, especially when we're looking at major events, either critical events or, for example, Oktoberfest, we could do homecoming 4th of July. At times that we need extra staff, we can call reserve officers to come in. All of the time that they put forth towards being a reserve officer is essentially free of charge. We do pay them $1 a year, which I'm sure you have a little.
Don't forget to put that in your text return.
Our reserve unit has been an invaluable resource since 1971, and some of our reserve officers have been board members through the state. They've worked very, very hard at building the integrity of police officers. And one thing that you need to understand is that when Larry receives his certification, I have a certificate here which we're going to give him, he has the same authority as a regular police officer. When he goes on duty and helps us, he has the ability to write citations, he has the ability to form arrests. He has the same authority that we do, and I'm extremely happy to have him. He's been a tremendous friend of mine, and I'm so happy to be here with him and his family. Larry has, during this entire process, worked a full-time job at Lennox Industries. He works part-time at Larry's Tire. He's also a volunteer with Special Olympics as a chaperone and takes care of two sons. So he has a very busy personal life, but still takes the time to dedicate himself to our agency and our community. So I just want to thank you, Larry.
Wow.
Don't leave.
Don't leave, Chris.
Got it.
Thank you. And we thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. That's great, truly. Is there another recognition? Okay.
I was going to say, I asked if Justin Nickel or Michelle Spahnheimer or both of you could come up and talk about the St. Francis Group real quick that was here for us.
Yeah, Michelle Spahnheimer, House of Community Development.
Justin Nickel, Public Works.
So just right before the council meeting, we did have a little presentation by the St. Francis Knights.
First Lego League.
Yeah, first Lego League Knights of the Lego Table. I'm going to try to get that. They actually, a great group of youngsters that came to interview both Justin and I back in November about community and planning and infrastructure and design and all those kind of great questions. And so they were working on presentation, asked to come and give that back to us so we could see what work they did. And so we suggested they came here and be able to catch a few other people as well. And so they presented a nice thing about parks and especially accessibility and stuff for all. And so I think they have a great plan that maybe they can see implemented. We'll now pass it off to Jeff Hubbard.
With that Lego team, do we need Jeff anymore?
I'll let that one. We appreciate them taking the time.
Thank you for that. I wondered what the team was doing out in the hallway when I got in tonight. Very good. Does anybody else up here have any comments tonight, council or city administration? You'll notice, I usually have a laptop up, or it's actually an iPad. I couldn't figure out my Dropbox password tonight, so I can't use it, and that means I don't have the data I collected to tell you about the Miller family. Mike and Jennifer Miller, Mike Miller's picture was in the newspaper this last week because Raycom had donated $10,000 to the Coliseum rebuilt fund, and it reminded me of just how much the two of them have done. I got in touch with one of the assistant county attorneys today and learned that Jennifer has not only been our county attorney for many years, very capably, but she's also been the president of the Iowa Association of County Attorneys. She's still involved in that very deeply, and she's been appointed to a couple of different commissions by the governor, including criminal justice reform, and she's just been quite a leader in our community. And Mike served on the Y Board as its president. He was on the three-person new building committee when the Y was built. He was up here for a term on the city council, and he ran for the school board, in addition to being the chair of the company that just rebuilt a huge, really nice building. You should see it if you ever get a chance to tour it, it's wonderful. So the shout-out tonight is to the Millers. They've just been so instrumental to our town. And Raycom has a real deep, long history of having its top people be volunteers in the community. They volunteer all the time for different nonprofits. They donate to everything good around town, so shout-out to them. That's all for me. I think it's time for the consent agenda now, and there are two things that we need to remove for two different reasons. One is item two, and the other is item four. Is there a motion to approve all of the other remaining items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you read those, please?
Approve the minutes for January 13 in the bill list in the amount of $1,317,326.17. Resolution declaring certain property surplus and authorizing sale, 2,000 Ford truck, a 2,000 Chevy truck with dump body, and a 1998 Chevy S10 truck. Resolution to certify unpaid bills for collection of taxes. Resolution amending the offer to purchase with Landover Corporation and Flint Hills Holdings, and liquor license renewals for Aberrode's La Salude and Quickstar 607.
Very good, thank you. Onto item G, which is reports. Oh, that's right, we do. Sorry. Back to consent agenda, item number two, which is to approve the Hy-Vee party room transfer to Best Western.
And Mr. Mayor, I need to abstain, as I have a conflict of interest since they are my employer.
Very good, that'll be noted for the record. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Number two.
Second.
Roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
And Thompson as abstaining due to his employer relationship with Hy-Vee.
Thank you. And it's my understanding that number four needs some work before we bring it back up here. Okay. Then on to item G, which is reports. Madam Clerk, would you read the first one?
Sure. The 2020 census partnership update. There will be a meeting on January 30 at the library, Meeting Room A at 5:00 PM, and the goal is to enhance the community partnership networking so that we can get an accurate count. In addition, I would like to mention that the census recruiter, Teresa Walton, will be at the library on Thursdays during the month of February from 10:30 to 6:00, because we do need more local people to be hired to work in our local neighborhoods to be census enumerators following the April census. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you. And thank you for the work you've been doing on the census in the background, trying to get that off the ground.
Thank you.
Onto resolutions, item H. Would you read the first one, please?
Resolution approving a development agreement with Jose Angel Regalado for a $250,000 catalyst building grant and a $50,000 new construction incentive.
Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
That goes to Cahill on that one. Any discussion?
Just a brief reminder, this is the $250,000 catalyst building grant the state did approve of that as well, so this is finalizing that. And then also, because it is new construction, we're including the $50,000 new construction incentive in the same agreement as well.
Thank you. Any public comment? Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
That carried. It's too dark to see it right now, but it's kind of fun to see the walls are up if you look out this window up here. Onto item number two, please.
Resolution approving a development agreement with McGregor's Furniture Mattress for a $75,000 catalyst building grant.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good. Any discussion up here?
This is the same thing. The state did approve the amount that was recommended as a catalyst building grant. There are no other funds contributed in this, but it is noted that they are eligible to apply for an incentive grant through the Marshalltown Central Business District.
Consular comment? Public comment? Roll call.
Thompson?
No.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. That one carried, and it's fun to see the building coming back together. Item number three, please.
Resolution endorsing community catalyst building remediation grant application for the multifamily housing complex in the 10 block of East State Street.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I do need to point out in this one that I did make an error in paragraph four where I used a previous resolution, so where it says Goodman's, it should say Landover and Flint Hills in that fourth paragraph. Otherwise, this is, they have just completed their full application, and the committee is recommending a $75,000 grant to them for the project. They'd also be eligible for that $50,000 new construction incentive. If you endorse this project tonight, we will send it to the state for them to evaluate and review, and then if they say yes, then we'll be doing a development agreement with them, like the two items you just approved.
With a 50-unit building coming up?
Correct.
Okay.
So one point of clarification is that the page three that outlines the source of funds calls $175,000 for catalyst grant, yet the memo calls out $75,000?
Yes. We told them that was the amount that was available. They requested the entire amount, and so we've told them that, you know, that amount is not what is being recommended, and they're going back to the drawing board and looking for additional sources to fill that gap.
Any other?
Is there only holdup at this point, funding?
What was that?
Is there only holdup at this point, funding sources?
And basically considering some additional costs with environmental remediation and things.
Are we being asked to fill that?
At this point, we are not.
And I just want to say, the reason I'm voting no on all these catalyst grants is, I understand they went through a process, they got approved, but Jessica, correct me if I'm wrong, you said realistically, there's only going to be about six or seven people that are going to receive this million dollars?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's my whole concern with this, is too few people applied, too few people are getting helped. You know, a quarter of a million dollars to the grocery store, and then 75 to McGregor's, and then 75 here to a company that's already missed a deadline, and I was brought up to speed on how the deadlines get missed. But again, I'm not against development, I'm just against that there wasn't a better plan in place from the state and from the city that we could have helped more people with smaller amounts. So, thank you.
And as a point of clarification, the minimum grant amount was $25,000, and I don't think that we had anybody making that request, so.
Like I said, I wish more people would have applied.
Any other comments or questions up here? Public comment? Let's vote on this one.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Carry it as well. Onto the next resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing the Public Works Engineering Department to submit a grant application to the Iowa Department of Agriculture and Land Stewardship Water Quality Initiative Urban Conservation Projects Program for a supplemental grant related to South First Street Parking Lot Stormwater Improvement Project.
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Discussion?
I guess this is a project we've been talking about for quite some time, the renovation of the parking lot that is behind the Tremont area at First and Church. And so we have actually applied for this grant two prior years and did never, we never got invited to fill out the full application. So we are at that point where we did get invited this year, and it would be $100,000 towards the project, which would offset other funding sources on hand, basically, if we were to receive it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments by the consellers? Any public comment? Roll call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Thank you. When able, next resolution.
Resolution approving an offer to buy real estate in acceptance with Stalzer Farms for 13.09 acres.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Second.
We'll go with Martin on that one. Thank you. Any discussion?
We were able to come to an agreement with Stalzer Farms on the amount of land we needed at 22,500 acre, with the consideration that we would also be moving a covert, which I believe will be in less than $10,000 at this point, based on new estimates.
Questions or comments up here?
Your Honor, I don't like this, again. We are facilitating, okay, we want to rebuild downtown, but we're facilitating the move of McFarland Clinic. We're actually helping them move away from downtown. They have other options in town, so there's $4 million. And again, there's other development we're looking at out in that area, on Merle Hibbs, but there's $4 million that has gone against our debt cap for a street that's going to help vacate downtown, and also, we're paying the landowners three times the going rate for farmland in Marshall County. I did some research today, farmland sales for $7,000 an acre. I understand this is for development. We want it. They're going to charge us $22.5 an acre. I just, again, I just think there are other places we could help facilitate McFarland to move or stay there without destroying our downtown, so I'm against this. I hope other council members rethink this. If we don't buy the land, we don't put the street in, we get the $4 million back to use for something else, in McFarland, we work with them to keep them downtown. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by the consellers? Any public comment? Roll call.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Carry it as well. Onto the next one, when able.
Resolution approving the 2019 annual financial report.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So back in November, we prepared an annual financial report that was cash basis. So we are required to produce a comprehensive annual financial report that's under the accrual basis. So if there's any outstanding expenses that incurred, that we incurred by June but didn't pay till after the end of the fiscal year, or revenues that we billed but hadn't collected yet, we pick them up now. So overall, revenues totaled $42 million, and our expenses were $32 million. So as you recall, fiscal year 19, we did have a tornado, and so many of the costs in here relate to that. We had over $3.7 million related to either the city's own property that we spent to recover or city cleanup throughout. FEMA had only paid us $28,000 at the end of June, and the insurance company paid us $4.2 million. So normally, you would set up an accounts receivable for what FEMA would owe you, but since FEMA had not obligated the projects at June 30, we could not set up that receivable. So we anticipate receiving approximately $2.6 million in fiscal year 20, of which 75% would be FEMA and 10% would be from the state. Other things that happened during the fiscal year, we did borrow $2.4 million for streets, sidewalks, and a parking lot improvement, and we paid down $5.5 million of debt. Overall, our outstanding principal debt is still $31.6 million for governmental activities and $17.7 million for business-type activities. Our capital assets increased by $13 million, of which $9.2 million was from the construction of the new police and fire building. So the fund balance in the general fund, which we like to keep an eye on, that increased from $4.4 million to $4.9. So during every budget session, I come before you and I ask you to contribute, to set aside money for our cash flow reserve, and you've kept that up at the 15% level. So of that $3.8 million that is unrestricted, 2.3 is sitting in a cash reserve. So the only way to get that money out of there is if council publishes a notice and it is, and a public hearing is held. So that's kind of our rainy day fund. Second part of this report is the audit. So I Bailey is our auditors. They came in and audited the city. We did receive an unmodified, clean opinion, which means the report is presented fairly in all material respects. And I did outline for you the comments that we did receive, and they're in the back of the book, but I did explain them to you. Are there any questions on those comments?
Questions or comments by the consellers? Any comment by the public? Okay. I have a comment.
Okay.
I don't know how we'd get by without you and the good work you do. I'm not kidding, especially with the tornado.
I do want to thank my team, because they're very instrumental in preparing this report. So I'd like to mention them by name. Brian Demoss is accounting manager, and he spends significantly amount of his time doing this report. Deb Tricky, Tanya Klosterman, and Jamie Krebs. They're small but mighty.
Quite a thorough report, too. Thank you.
And without violating any confidentiality, hell of a job.
Thank you.
Seriously. I mean, for what they found pennies on a couple items?
Yep.
Impressive.
Thank you.
Let's call the roll.
Okay.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Thank you. Carried again, and the last item, number seven.
We have a public hearing followed by consideration of a resolution approving development agreement with Danny and Garrett Goodman, authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement.
I will declare the public hearing is open, and the time is 5:58. Were there any written comments received by the clerk?
No, Your Honor.
Are there any public comments? Seeing no one standing or rushing to the mic, we're on to staff review.
Yes, this was one, a project that I hope you're all familiar with by now, because it's been up here for a few different things. Danny and Garrett Goodman are going to be reconstructing a new restaurant, actually using three lots, whereas previously, they had one right across the street here at the corner of State and Center Street. And so the council did approve their catalyst grant application, which is at the state now for scoring. The council, well, they would also be eligible for the $50,000 as well, and this is set up as a development agreement for 100% of the increment for seven years, not to exceed not to exceed 175,000. Dollar-wise, what we were trying to do is really get into an area where we were around that 25% of assistance from outside sources. And this kind of, that amount put them there, and I believe is an achievable amount in that time period as well.
Thank you. Any council comments?
I wish somebody was here from the school board because we continue to use TIF money, which the school board is the biggest, or the school system's the biggest victim when we use TIF. This is $175,000 of taxable income that the city will use and the other taxing entities will not. I believe TIF is a good thing, but not for retail development.
Any other council comments? Okay. I declare the public hearing is concluded at 6:01 PM. On to the next item.
There's a resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should have called for a resolution to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any further comment up here or out there? Roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Thank you. That carried as well. It was the ceiling behind us in the Coliseum that clipped our building a little bit and just crushed their old one. So it's nice to have another good rest, retail restaurant coming back to downtown. Onto ordinances. Would you read the first one, please?
This is the second reading for the ordinance approving changes to the Marshall Town zoning ordinance and map by rezoning parcel 841-834-4005.
First, I call for a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
Comment?
Michelle Spahnheimer, excuse me, Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. We talked about this at your last meeting. This is a rezoning of area south of Washington Street between 9th and 12th Street, looking to rezone it to our four medium-density residential. So just entertaining if you have any other additional questions. Otherwise, we will have a public hearing on this item at your next council meeting and third reading, which would finalize the rezoning process. And we have not received any other additional public comments, to my knowledge, through our office, so.
Thank you. And I was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Correct.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? Public comment? Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Thank you. That carried as well. And Madam Clerk, one able to read the next ordinance, please?
This is the first reading of an ordinance to amend the code by amending Chapter 76, Schedule 8, speed limits by reducing speed on South 12th Avenue between Westwood Drive and Prairie Lane to 35 miles per hour.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Could I question change there? It's 12th Street.
Yep.
Oh, you're correct.
Oh, yeah. Good catch. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're always our street guy.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I would further plead that we waive the further readings of this ordinance and it go into effect with this vote.
I'll consider that a motion to do so. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Do we need a vote on the first?
Yes.
Motion before we take the second?
Oh, we do, don't we?
Yeah.
You'd think by now I'd know that. Is there any other discussion about the ordinance before the vote from any of the councilors?
So this is a vote on the first reading. Isom moved. Thompson seconded.
No.
Oh, Martin seconded. Thank you.
And if there aren't any other consular comments, are there any public comments about it? I did receive one phone call from somebody that was negative about it and lived out there nearby. Okay, let's vote on this one, too.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And on the vote to waive the second reading and third reading by Martin and Goudy, roll call. Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
No.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Five-two.
Carried as well, so that will...
Can I ask a question on that? Is there not a public hearing required?
No.
On an ordinance change?
No. They're only on certain ordinance changes like rezonings and things, and so there's not on that one.
May I ask a question on that? How soon will the signs be changed? What's our normal process? So the public knows.
Yeah, we'll ultimately probably put something out noting to the public, saying that it has been changed and public works will add it to their list of things that they need to do, so.
Is it?
It can snow at any point, so it's kind of hard to tell.
I know, but is it, what's our normal turnaround on that? Is it two weeks? Three weeks? Not even that? Okay.
We have to publish it in the newspaper before it can be effective.
Right.
And that's a week turnaround on that.
Any other questions or comments about that? I guess we've already had the vote. Okay, then we're on to discussion items, the first one of which is discussion of senior citizens' building insurance proceeds.
Yes, we have closed this project out completely at this point, and so I wanted to kind of bring you back in accounting and show you where we were at and what remained. So we received nearly $700,000 from our insurance company for the actual cash value of the building between the demolition and then the preparation of plans and specs and oversight, as well as the removal of items from the building and plumbing disconnection, and then some time that we had employees charged shortly after the tornado had happened. We have a total of $428,238.56 remaining. All along, we have been talking about that there is a gap that needs to be plugged into the Coliseum. This was the same spreadsheet that was presented to you when we requested approval of the contract with Garland Construction, as well as the additional costs. And so what I'll draw your attention to here is that we were looking at a gap of $555,844. Surprisingly, ultimately, it's a good thing that the insurance proceeds actually came back with more funds than we had estimated. And so it's my recommendation to you that at the next council meeting, we bring forward a resolution to formally transfer the 428,000 remaining insurance proceeds to help offset the 550,000, almost $556,000 gap that the city needs to fill.
Thank you. Discussion up here?
Your Honor, if I remember right, and I need someone to help me remember this, it was originally brought up that this money would go to the Coliseum because we thought the senior center was going to be part of the Coliseum? Is that correct?
I would say that that was all part of a discussion. Ultimately, we were to work with the scene, I think the direction was we were to work with the Senior Citizen Center to try and locate them there. We did work with them in the design process and ultimately could not come up with enough space that they desired. And so that's why that didn't work out. However, sort of all along, there has been a known gap that the city would need to use cash on hand to fill, with this being at least one of three sources that's listed there that could be utilized to fill that gap.
I guess I would rather, as a gesture, that more seniors will use the library than the new Coliseum, because it's my understanding that the Coliseum, all the spaces, the meeting rooms and the gym floors and everything else, those will be for rent basis? Is that correct? That there won't be free usage of any of the meeting rooms in the Coliseum?
There's actually, it's going to be the Martha Ellen Ty Conference Room that will be available for free nonprofit use for meetings.
For just nonprofit organizations?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Otherwise, we haven't set any rates or anything or had that sort of discussion moving forward.
I guess I would, as a gesture, that more seniors use the library. I'd like to see this be our contribution to the library expansion fund, since I think more seniors use the library than will use the Coliseum. And I realize that still leaves us, we still have to fill this gap of 555,844. It doesn't solve that, but I just, I think, in my opinion, it's a better gesture to use the money for the library and then find the, fill the gap for the Coliseum some other way.
Any other councilors have any comments or questions?
So I like using it where we've currently done, just based on where this project is from a timeline perspective. My only comment is, is I thought that the discussion around the 140,000 in TIF was thrown back in TIF and hadn't been finally confirmed if we were going to be doing that and using it for the Coliseum.
So we have, so we have the $140,000. It has been moved back into Fund 125, which is the TIF fund, but we have not brought forward a resolution to you to make that movement to the Coliseum renovation fund, but we can certainly prepare that, too, for a future council meeting if the timing is right.
Other councilors? Public comment?
Can you verify, though, the total gap that we have right now is the 555,844?
Correct.
Even with, that does not include, or that does include, the donations that came through in the last couple weeks?
So this, so we're saying we're going to raise 1.35 million. So we have 24,000 outstanding on that, but that is not included as part of that number. That's a completely separate number, because I do believe that we will hit that goal and that that won't be a problem. This is simply, that 555,844 is simply what the gap is, once you consider all of those other numbers.
Thank you.
I'd like to be on record as a huge supporter of the Coliseum as a veteran. So my flavor would be to go that way.
Thank you. And also, thank you for the help in the fundraising that you've done. Other council comments?
I would have to agree, and I think everybody realizes that I've been a staunch supporter of the American Legion and the Legion all along, and I think that the money should go there. We're going to end up with whatever it is, 120-some thousand that we certainly can find. And I'm not a great proponent of TIF either for a lot of reasons, but I think the timing of this and the demolition and everything that's going on now, we need to fill this gap and so that we can get that open. It's a, it's a, it's a big draw for the downtown area, and we, we just need to get this open. It's a, it's a, it's a big source of revenue, so it's not that I have any qualms about the library. I think that's also a value, a very valuable asset to the city, but their timing is a little bit different where, when we get to that discussion, there'll be obviously some other ways to raise some of that money. And I think through, I think through the Coliseum and the donations, we've proven that, that it is possible to raise money in this city for a good cause. And I would just put my, my vote behind moving the Coliseum forward.
Jessica, what is the completion timeline? Do you have a, is there a moving date or target?
Yeah, September 30th of this year is what we've been given initially, and this is still, we're very, very early on in the process. We haven't really talked about any change orders yet, whether good or bad, and we haven't ran into any delays, you know, here in this first month. So we're very, very early on still, but our hope is that it will stay as close as possible to September 30th.
Mr. Hally, some of us know just how much you've spent in time and resources with the Legion, with the veterans, and with the Coliseum rebuild fundraising, so thank you too. And I still have the hope that because we, our Park and Rec Director, Jeff, does such a nice job, that they will come when we have an intergenerational thing going on in the Coliseum, so that there is programming for seniors, programming for youth, and we can have the adopt a grandparent to adopt a grandchild type of program going. Any other council comments before I invite the public comment? Public comment?
Okay, my name is Linda Clark, 306 South Second Avenue, and having been a very frequent user at 20 East State, that the city sold for $10,000, and I recall it said that that building was costing $35,000 a year to maintain it by the city. Putting a pencil to it, in three years, we've lost, what, 100? I wrote it down. Well, anyway, 35 times three. And Mr. Thompson making the statement about the library. The things that were being used there, we used it for dances. We had indoor shuffleboard court, which we do not have any place to accommodate that now. We do not have the full-size billiard pool tables, that there were a number of seniors that enjoyed using that. I don't see those types of activities taking place at the library, which one considers that to be like a quiet zone. And so I guess I'm standing here stating that, yes, we are adding things to parks for children, but we need to have things that the seniors like to do. And I know that the things that we like to do, we're not having a place for it. I wasn't involved with your talking with Senior Citizen, Inc., but I know there isn't anything here now that I am wanting to do. I'm not interested in pickleball. I would like to have what we had. And that's my comment, and I don't see the library being a suitable place, Gary. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Let's go on to the next discussion item.
Is that something, there's general consensus, or is there anybody who would like to make a motion on that, to move it forward for a resolution to the next meeting?
I would move that.
I'll second. Further discussion up here or out there?
Just for clarity, that motion's for the senior citizen proceeds, 428,000 roughly, to go toward.
To be transferred to the Coliseum fund.
And you don't need a vote tonight because you're going to bring it back as a resolution, correct?
I, I, my preference is that if there's any contention, that my direction is very clear as to what I'm supposed to do, as four of you direct me what to do.
So we typically do vote to send her in that direction? And unless there are any other comments up here or out there, let's go ahead and vote.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Carried, very good. Do you have your direction? Onto item two, which is strategic plan update.
Yes, so as you, as you all know, you completed a survey of ranking priorities, and that definitely gave me some information to start putting together sort of a first draft of some of our objectives with our goals. But I did want to go through just a few of the things that I hope you had a chance to review, sort of how things came out as well. So by each goal, you, there's a weighted average with five being high, one being low. And so I kind of drew some thicker lines to delineate between four, three, and two. And so ultimately, what we have here is pretty good. One of the things that I had asked was that there be hot-button issues be identified so that we would know when there was an item that needed a different process. And your comments didn't really lead me to be able to do that or to definitively say that on quite a few things. So anything in here on yellow, like the working with the partners on the formation of Community Development Center, requiring more discussion and community involvement was one of the items. In goal number two, we had a few more that were seen as hot-button, being the completion of the Veterans Memorial Coliseum, which process-wise, I don't know what we could do process-wise any different, given that, you know, everything's under construction. There's really not a, a time period for, the decision's been made, I guess. You already made the decision, so there's nothing more that we could really do there. One of the things that I, we're going to talk more about in the capital improvement plan was, you know, looking at our repairing and enhancing the infrastructure in the central business district. And then the other one that was clearly something that needed to be discussed further, have this public process, was an angled parking, an angled parking pilot study on Main Street. When we get into goal three, there were a few less things. Really, it was the city zoning ordinance that required a little bit more. The Highway 14 ordinance was one that also came up in saying this could be a hot button, and I feel like we're following a public input process first, and that we just did hold a public meeting with impacted property owners to get feedback, which will be going back to the Planning and Zoning Commission before they make any recommendation to you. And then when we get into goal four, which is our goal for partnering with people, there was nothing in there that was seen as a hot-button issue. And so I did take this and put together a draft of our goals and objectives, but before I get, I get too far down the road into getting that into a schedule, I really wanted wanted to make sure that there were no other items where you all felt that there needed to be sort of an, what I would call, um, an enhanced public process. Um, so as we talked about in strategic planning, that, that, that hot-button issue would be something that would automatically trigger, that we're doing a lot more public engagement on the front end of something before we would bring it to the council. And so, that's really my concern right now, is that, um, do I have everything identified so that we're, we're all going to be on the same page as we move forward here in, in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one?
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
That's only the first part, there.
Okay.
So, if there's, if there is nothing more there, what you see here is what we will move forward with in developing, and so, um, I took this and made a, a rough draft of our goals and objectives, and really, there was very, very, um, little change here. It was actually in our first goal where there was, um, the most change, um, in looking at our first objective of being supporting, um, development in downtown and the M C B D, uh, pro, supporting and promoting commercial and industrial development, um, looking at, um, innovative ways to further enhance housing quality and quantity, and our fourth objective being to ensure appropriate infrastructure exists for all types of development. What I don't want you to do is get caught in each of the bulleted items below, but think about those from a broader level, is that if there is anything that kinda came up in the way of development, would it fit under, um, any of those four items where we could say this certainly has a tie back to our strategic plan, even if it's something we don't know about it right now, um, and, and can't include something specific about it. Um, getting into goal two, everything really stayed the same visually, we wanna visually enhance the appearance of community, um, improve our commu- communication in supporting public relations and marketing in Marshalltown. Goal three was also the same, things just changing underneath, which, you know, we need to review policies, procedures, and ordinances for updates, um, developing comprehensive plans for city infrastructure and improvements, recruiting and retaining and training employees in order to maintain a successful workforce, and then finally reviewing existing city function and finances for efficiencies. And then when we get into goal four, we've called out a few organizations that we are going to partner with, um, which would be the Arts and Culture Alliance and Impact, as well as Trails, Inc., and then we get into, um, two other objectives that also did not change from this last year, uh, kind of a catch-all for any other partnerships that could come before us in the next year, um, with some specific ones, uh, noted there, as well as then, um, talking about working with the Iowa League of Cities, um, to ensure that we use our legislative resources to affect positive change for the city. So this is the draft, um, if this looks good, then what we'll, what I'll do next would be to come up kind of with the schedule for things, going back and using your ranking to try and identify what are those things we should really be, um, hitting on very quickly versus maybe something that would kick off into twenty twenty-one. No, I'm done.
Okay. Questions or comments? Should I solicit a motion to proceed, or?
Well, I have a question first. So, when you take the rankings, when you put these objectives together, will you put them in that ranking order then?
I, I will try. Um, there were some things that are required things that need to happen, or other things where maybe they didn't rank very highly, but they're still things that we have to do, and so, uh, that's where I'll work with, with, um, you know, staff to figure out when, when things might have a time to fit into places, and there are some of these that previously had an ongoing timeframe to them. If there's some specific action that needs to happen, we try to call that out, um, but uh, we'll, we'll ultimately, I'll, I'll try and use those rankings. This is the first time that we've actually kinda done rankings like this, so I can't say that I've had this data before to.
So you didn't, you didn't do that last year then?
No.
Oh, okay.
Other questions or comments?
Your Honor, uh, if we have questions as a council on, uh, wanting further public input, and we seek to do surveys, I think we would be remiss if we didn't follow those survey recommendations. I mentioned specifically the quiet zone. If we do the survey, we get the feedback, and then we do something different than what's recommended, then I, I caution us on that.
I only caution ourselves in, with that comment with regards to the sample size and demographic of which the respondents of the survey are, right, understanding that how we, if we're gonna do that right, making sure that our survey reaches an appropriate sample size and demographic that was set forth.
I agree.
That represents the community.
I agree with Councilor Isom on that, that we need to be careful of the data we take. If it's all voluntary data, and we're not sure where it's coming from, we need to use it very carefully. So if we wanted to do a survey, I think we would want to make sure we did, um, a professionally-founded survey that came about with the, um, appropriate, again, the appropriate demographics of, of what we, of the people that we want to hear from.
So what I heard Gabe say is when he volunteers to do the census twenty-twenty and goes door-to-door, he's gonna ask all these questions at the same time? So we have a, that's not what you said?
No, it's not.
Wouldn't that be nice though?
I thought that's what you, I thought that's what you said.
No.
I'm clear over here, I.
Other comments or questions?
If not, I'll, um, come back kinda with all pieces in place for the next meeting, and I'll probably do it as a, a resolution. Um, the schedule is something that, uh, will be put together with me and department heads, and so that's, that's where this will go, so hopefully it'll be adopted, um, in early February.
And then Jessica, when you do have that, can you get it to us prior to the Friday before, so we have more time to digest it?
I, I will get it to you if I have it done before the Friday before as well, so.
Fair enough, fair enough.
I, I do try to get things out if, if possible. Sometimes, uh, this one was just the end of the, end of the process for me.
Okay. On to number three.
Yes, I'm gonna take, uh, over the capital improvement plan here tonight. Um, this was something that I had prepared, and I'll, I'll kinda start with the memo. Uh, there, there is pretty much, everything is, is the same as what we presented before, except for a, a few items which we'll talk about a little bit more in-depth, and so, um, I did put in the memo with each fund what had changed, and so just to kinda go through with Fund zero-three-zero, which is our capital improvement tax levy funds, um, the backfill revenue was revised, and a few different additional projects were added, which would be digital video cameras for here in the, uh, council chambers, and then, um, we, we recognized that we hadn't really planned for doing anything, um, back where the annex was taken down, and that we would really like to do something there this year and not go another year with that. So, we talked about a, um, alley park project, um, to kinda help connect the Coliseum and that space a little bit more. So the details of that, um, or what were kind of conceptual details in our minds is, is in the project description sheet. Um, road use tax, we made quite a few changes. Um, uh, there were a few projects that we had proposed in that first draft that would use road use tax funding, like downtown infrastructure, we pulled that completely out. Um, some equipment purchases were also moved back to, uh, later fiscal years, and so this still does show that we'd be spending, um, more than the approximate million dollars a year that we would have going there, which would be using fund balance that we currently have on hand. So, um, again, this is just a projection, fiscal year twenty and twenty-one are really the two years that, um, we're, we're, you know, proposing amendments for or adoption of, and so these future years are ones where there's still things to change. We also added the Park and Rec Donation Fund that was not showing in your report last time, um, due to, uh, the, um, contribution towards Anson Park, as well as, um, hoping that for the alley park, we could get some donations, um, towards that as well. Um, three fifty-three capital projects was the one that changed the most, and we'll talk a little bit, um, further about this, um, mostly as it relates to these, this is the fund where we started to put those projects where we, um, believe there would be a borrowing component, and so that's where, um, I'll pull up that spreadsheet again that has this. Um, I did add in the railroad crossing safety improvements slash quiet zone to fiscal year twenty-one due to it being ranked highly on the council priority. Um, I also added in the splash pad for fiscal year twenty-four. Um, it didn't rank very highly, but I think it's something that it, it was there, and it was, it was ranked, when you pulled out, you know, where the distribution was, it looked like it should be something in the next five years that we should be planning for. Um, I also, uh, based on our conversation at the last meeting, um, added in the tennis court reconstruction that the school district is requesting we participate in, and then modified the two big unknown projects, which are Highway fourteen corridor and the downtown street and sidewalk project for downtown infrastructure project, um, just getting some placeholders in there, but knowing that this will really be a year of discovery on that, um, and there's more that we'll know next year at this time. And then, um, in, uh, Fund three fifty-five, which is our dangerous and dilapidated building program, um, the revenues were adjusted down to better reflect what, um, is likely to be, um, going into that fund, does show some issues when we get, you know, three to four years down the road, um, but for now, we do have, um, funding there to continue taking down some properties, and we'll probably be talking about this in the next year or two, as to ensure we have some stable funding there. So, any questions on those changes outside of any for three fifty-three, 'cause we'll talk about those further?
Uh, why the street and, the sidewalk projects, when you say modified downtown street and sidewalk project, we're not paying to put someone else's sidewalk in, are we?
Well, there's, so there's no scope that's been determined, and so that's where I, um, the, the way that I modified that scope of work is, I think really, um, after Justin and I met and sort of talked a little bit about this further, is what we're really asking is, that, that there's a, a very extensive scope of work that can take place here with, um, you know, not only streetscaping, but also looking at the angled parking question, looking at the one-way to two-way conversion question, and that, um, what we're proposing is that, um, a borrowing in fiscal year twenty-one would include two hundred thousand dollars, um, which is estimated on the high side, um, but to hire a consultant to basically move forward with, with planning a project, ultimately with the scope to be determined, um, you know, the, the construction scope to be determined as part of that. And so then what I did is, rather than putting a whole, a whole bunch of money, I think we had three-point-five million in fiscal year twenty-one, we just put what we think we would actually need from July first of twenty twenty to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, really looking at that period as being a period of, of planning projects, knowing that we could be sitting here a year from now, um, having a better idea of what is the scope on the Highway fourteen project, and what are the financial commitments that would, needed there, and what exactly would there be the appetite to do, and what should that scope be, um, you know, at that point? And not using the conversation right now to say, this is the scope that we wanna do, but use that conversa, or future point before we would be soliciting for a, um, a consultant to determine what is that scope that we would want a consultant to look at.
And then remind me, when would we know on the Highway fourteen grant?
Um, so the build grant, we would know by November of.
Of this year?
Yeah, twenty twenty, yep.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
November.
So that's where, um, you know, as I, as we look at this spreadsheet again, I put those two projects in green, um, because I wanted to show, really what we did is move things out to fiscal year twenty-two, which does show a pinch point, you know, it certainly does, but those are two projects that could be very big projects, or, um, they could be minor projects in, in terms of how that looks financially for us, and so, um, I didn't want you all to get hung up on those two projects and those scopes specifically, knowing that there's still a lot of time, um, and actions that need to take place to figure out what those are, but to illustrate that if we're going to try and do some things in that fiscal year twenty-two with borrowing, we're gonna, we're gonna run into some things, and we can talk about it when we, when we get things a little bit more clarified.
And at the same time, that one number may disappear completely.
You are one hundred percent correct, and then you don't really have any issue at all.
I mean, I'm a pinch point at all then.
Yeah.
Yep.
So to, to go back over kinda what this spreadsheet was, was looking at, you know, this first item was our debt capacity kinda by year. Um, I did reduce, uh, the current fiscal year twenty-one by five hundred thousand, um, for the, uh, loan that we have applied for, um, for the nuisance abatement loan, um, through Iowa Economic Development Authority. Um, I think that could kick off into, uh, uh, July first potentially, so, um, and then really what I started looking at here was, um, you know, we had nine, uh, essentially a eight-point-nine million dollars in capacity that was available. When you looked at everything and then totaled it up, that's the capacity that would remain, which would transfer over into the next year, except for, you can't really do that when you have a negative number, so, um, these numbers are both, what's the, what's the growth and debt retirement look like from year to year if you were just going from, uh, your remaining debt, debt capacity to remaining debt capacity, and that's how you get into those six million dollar, um, nearly six million dollar figures. So, are there any questions on the worksheet as a whole before we start talking about fiscal year twenty-one?
You feel you've erred on the side of caution, right?
Uh, in what way?
All your numbers are elevated, or?
Um, some of these are, are fairly precise, um, just to use the fire truck, uh, purchase, yeah, Chief Ryerson's been working with, um, with, uh, a company, um, you know, Jeff had some ideas of what needed to be done on a lot of these. I, I feel like we're in the ballpark on, on a lot of this. Uh, Highway fourteen, I feel very confident on. Um, it's this downtown one that, I mean, really, it's whatever you set your scope as is what it will cost you, um, but yeah, there's, there's some of these where there hasn't been a lot of thought into them, um, you know, kinda moving out into these later years. It's just sort of a, a guesstimate as to what we would need, and ultimately, you wouldn't know until you got further out. So with, with that, I guess the, the most important year in this is fiscal year twenty-one, and looking at it, and, um, the, the projects, um, there's, there's a few that changed on here, and so we'll, we'll just go through them all real quick to just talk about them. Um, the, the top one, um, was the purchase of, uh, two new fire trucks using cash on hand, as well as then borrowing for the remainder. Um, there will also be some trade-in value that would come with that as well, that has been reduced out of the amount that needed to be borrowed. Um, the airport hangar and terminal is, um, reflected at one-point-five million dollars right now. I think we're pretty solid on that being a, a good estimate for that project. Um, that would likely be ready to go out to bid, I think, in October of twenty twenty. It's, uh, yep, so, um, and then also included the library addition, uh, what we had talked about and what I had said I had just placed in there for conversational sake, was, um, the city contributing five hundred thousand towards that project. Um, and then trail replacement, we, we do know, um, with the ADA transition plan data, we do have some ideas of where our worst trail segments, um, lie, and that's just a general budget that we would use to, uh, basically get as much of our worst areas done as possible. Um, the softball complex parking lot is a two-phase project that Jeff has proposed, um, to break it up into east side versus west side, uh, to ultimately go from what's kind of a, a gravel lot now, um, even though it's not really gravel, to a fully paved lot. The one that we talked about last time and added in was the tennis court reconstruction, and this is the higher number of the two figures, um, for the reconstruction of the six courts, um, as well as then the addition of parking and lighting. Uh, I did include two hundred thousand in there for a consultant for, um, designing something for downtown. Ultimately, um, as we look at that, that's gonna take a lot of time too. There's a lot of input that's needed from business owners in the Marshalltown Central Business District, and, and we do think that it will take a decent amount of time to develop a scope. I did throw back in the six hundred thousand dollars for the railroad crossing safety improvements, as I said, because it ranked pretty highly, and we still have the fourth and Meadow Lane storm sewer, which is the next phase of, of that, um, project. And so as you can see, it totaled seven-point-four million. It's not projected to use the entire capacity that we would have available in fiscal year twenty-one.
And are you looking for direction tonight on some of these items?
Yes, um, so the way the process will work is that, uh, I think it would be at the Mar, the first meeting in March would be setting a public hearing on not only the capital improvement plan, but budget amendment and budget, and then that public hearing would be held at the second meeting, March, yeah, March twenty-third. So, um, we do still have some more time, however, this is one of those things we do wanna get wrapped up, um, kind of as quickly as possible, because it does impact some other numbers and other.
Then I would suggest that the tennis court reconstruction be taken out, and we give our half of the tennis courts to the, the school district, and let them do whatever they wanna do with it. Because when I reread through that resolution from seventy-four, the way I interpret it, and I'm not a lawyer, Roger, or Joel, but they can't change the eight courts without our consent. So, rather, and I don't, and in conversation with Jeff, and I don't wanna put Jeff on the spot here, but I don't see us having tennis lessons in the future, and so we don't need those courts anymore. So I would say we, we would draft whatever we need to, to give our half ownership of the courts to the school district, and let them do whatever they want to with it. That would take six eighty-four out of it, and then on your crossing safety improvements, you know, that we already voted on that once, or you guys did, I wasn't here, um, you know, I'd still like to see the one crossing closed by the Aquatic Center, but I think, uh, Union Pacific would fund the whole thing to close an intersection.
They, they don't. It's a fifteen thousand dollar contribution that they'll give you towards the cost of closing an intersection.
It's gonna cost us six hundred thousand to close a street?
Um, six hundred thousand is for.
Oh, that's for the whole project to get.
Improvements for all four of the crossings, um, which includes, you know, moving sign, you know.
Yeah, I understand.
And that's six hundred thousand.
That was all four of them.
Yeah, yeah, and it's really, that is just for items that, um, are Union Pacific-specific costs, um, with, uh, moving their signals to be inside, you know, so you have an expanded area.
I would say that we, we let that issue die on the other three, and just dead-end the streets, and make it safer, you know, stop the kids from crossing. the streets and make it safer, you know, stop the kids from crossing there. And so I tell you, that takes 100, well, it takes a million two out of your, I mean, I don't know how everybody else feels about that. I mean, I'd love to hear what everybody else says. But I don't see any other items that can really change that much.
I'd agree with you, Gary, on the tennis court reconstruction. I fully support that project, but I don't think that another taxing entity needs to leverage of a heavy list of different priorities that we already have in front of us. So that's my caution on the tennis courts. I am a proponent, though, of the crossing safety improvements. I think that it's something in the right direction. I think it has multiple benefits to it.
Well, Gabe, would you agree with me on the tennis courts? They can tax the public for that 684 just like we can. I mean, if we don't have the money, we gotta, we gotta tax them. The school district can tax the public.
I agree.
I mean, do we, we agree with that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Other comments or questions by the council?
I would like to keep the crossing safety improvements in, as I think that they are important for the safety in our community. And I think that the safety is, is one of our high priorities that we have.
And just my two cents, I've already voted yes in favor of both of those projects, the tennis court and the railroad crossing. And I would like to see both of them back in, like they've been proposed.
Other council comments?
I think further discussion is warranted on both of those projects. We can see it in different lights. We can amortize some of it, so on. We've got a lot of things due to recovery, to economic development, to downtown, to Highway 14 completion. A lot of road construction is being planned within the city. I think those items need further discussion.
Anyone else up on the council dais? Public comment on this?
Linda Clark, 306 South Second Avenue. I have sat in on school board meetings, and I think it's a very good common sense approach, which Gary and Mr. Isom have both stated. I think that would be a good thing to give it to the school, because like I agree, we're not a city going to be doing tennis lessons and let them have it. I heard a lot of good comments that the school board were doing and people that were concerned about that, and they had a good plan for it. And I think the city needs to be doing some more things for our seniors that are not really getting the things that we were used to having. And I would like to see a focus put back on that, because we do not have the things that we were enjoying. The billiard pool table, the indoor shuffleboard court, there are a lot of people using that, along with the dance facilities and the cards and the socialization. And we need to have a good space for those things. And I would encourage the council to please remember, the $105,000 that you've saved, the $35,000 a year that that building was costing, and you sell it for 10,000, when will we recover the tax dollars? It's still an iffy thing with the Landover Corporation. You know, we'll have housing, but we don't have anything for people to do now. I remember what we had as a child. Thank you for your time.
Other public comment?
Theron Schutie, 507 Craig Circle, resident of Marsh Town, also school district superintendent. I think it's important to note, since these conversations have happened both at the city council level and the school board level, that it's been really interesting dialogue. One of the residents who spoke against the tennis court project, who indicated that the school district has all kinds of money and the city shouldn't be involved in continuing to partner in that project, also came before the school board and encouraged them not to fund the project because our local businesses and industries and private citizens should fund it, which, you know, I found kind of contradictory to the comments that were made here. I also found it somewhat offensive that said individual would call out one of our local patrons and business owners who's been very supportive of our school district, particularly in moving some teaching and learning processes forward to support STEM education, as if, you know, as if they weren't doing their share. As I said to the council on a couple occasions, we made a purposeful effort not to seek private or corporate donations for this particular project, first and foremost, because it was coming on the heels of a significant fundraising effort that took place prior to my arrival, for the most part with the Roundhouse Project, 2.7 million raised. Secondly, the city was embarking on a significant fundraising project with the Coliseum, and we didn't want to create any diversion of funds or attention for that as well. So another individual who spoke against the project, and I think there were two or three, highly encouraged all of us to read the Park and Rec strategic plan. So I did that. I don't know if any of you did. It's a well, it's a well-done document. I just wanted to point out some highlights from this document. The document in general talks a lot about, from the surveying that was done of the community members and the respondents, probably the number one trend is to take care of the assets that you already have. And Mr. Thompson helped me with one of the points I was going to make, because I think prior occasions before you, there was some confusion as to what role the city did have and does have and has had for the past 45 years. And they've been joint owners of this complex, which happens to reside on school property. I don't think that's unusual in a community of this size for the city to either partner with the school district to provide such recreational and competitive amenities, or if the school district owns said complex, that the city usually supplements that with pockets of tennis courts or recreational facilities in other parts of the city. I would say that had we known today, had we known yesterday, what the city's position was going to be on continuing to systemically get out of the tennis court as a recreation facility business, then there may have been some different attitudes about repurposing West End into footsall courts. Because as I've said all along, even though it feels like we're doing a bigger thing, the only thing really bigger that we're asking to be done is have restrooms be put at the facility because between West End and the high school, we've owned or co-owned 12 courts between those two complexes. The lit courts have been converted into footsalls, so we have no lit courts within the community. That's one part of the project that I would say is a nice, to have a nice city that could potentially be fundraised later. But I think to have 12 tennis courts, to have appropriate restroom facilities like you have at many of your parks on that facility, to have it be accessible for all ages, because I would contend that all ages, including seniors, will take advantage of both the tennis courts as well as the pickleball court facilities. You already have a large contingent that, that used the Coliseum before it got damaged, and that also now use the Y for that purpose. And I'll guarantee you, when these courts are built, that, that percentage of people of all ages will grow exponentially, and you'll probably get pressured for more pickleball courts throughout the city based on what's happening in other places like the Quad Cities, Des Moines, et cetera. I think the other thing that comes out loud and strong in this document is the desire to look for mutual partnerships, mutual ways to partner and to provide all the different things that are, that are in here. First and foremost, take care of what you have. Secondly, to add different amenities to try to help bring forth economic development, for example, which is a big part of what we've been talking about, which 12 courts at one location will provide the opportunity of. I've reached out on numerous occasions to Jeff, Jenny, and Parks and Recs, talking about how we can partner together to try to ramp up youth participation in activities. We're trying to do our part, all the way down to the elementary schools with intermural programming. We're very interested in partnering to get some cross pollination, to help support providing access, providing opportunity to kids. We'd be a great marketing arm for the programs. I think some of you maybe don't know or have forgotten also that part of that collaboration has been allowing free usage of our facilities post tornado for the Park and Rec programs. Both the Lenahan Building and the MLA Building, as far as our gymnasiums go, have hosted many of your youth and adult activities post tornado. So our, my hope is that you will reconsider your position on this. I do believe, as a community, we have a responsibility, school and city, to provide these types of amenities. It's never going to be cheaper than it is today or tomorrow. And, and the train has already left the station on phase one of this project. We're already taking bids on building the six new courts south of the existing eight courts. And we were fortunate to get a very generous grant from the Marthell and Ty Foundation that we believe will fully fund the creation of the three pickleball courts and possibly even the lighting of those courts if we so choose. But in order for this project to be what it needs to be for the next 45 years, we need to reconstruct those original eight courts. The price point on that is less than what you saw to begin with, because we're already taking care of a chunk of the project. So it's a little bit less, but it's a 50-50 split between the school district and the city. And the two parts of that project that could be deferred in order to bring the cost down a little bit more would be the parking lot off Second and the lights. And like I said, you know, I'm sure that we have people that will be willing to spearhead once the Coliseum project is completed. As far as the fundraising, an effort to try to get the lighting, I do believe that the parking off of Second would be a huge accessibility benefit, even though we're going to try to make accessibility provisions also on the south side of that complex. And, and that we together can hopefully create a venue for both community as well as school district that we'll be proud of and that will be an asset for, for the time to come. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Schutie.
Dr. Schutie, can, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Um, this is a stupid question. Can you even light those courts? Is there any zoning ordinance with the houses right behind you like that?
The original eight courts, there was, part of that agreement was not to light those. And so what we're looking at, although we, we still need to have some conversations with the residences, we would look at either lighting three or six of the courts that would be the south closest to the school building. Part of what we need to talk to them about and maybe even demonstrate is how the LED lighting is different from the lighting that people are, were accustomed to. For example, at West End, it does not cast out, it casts down. It will illuminate the area, there's no question of that. But we're looking at, at a minimum, possibly lighting the very southeast corner, which is where the pickleball and the courts furthest away from the residences would be.
And then also, and please don't step away, could, did we drop the ball when, is a city a long time ago, weren't the French courts lit? And when we had Swifts move and build the courts at River View Park, did they not get lit, the two courts?
I have no knowledge of that.
I mean, I guess that-
We have to look into that.
Yeah, I don't know. But the other thing is, why, why tennis courts today? What, what brought, I guess I'm curious where this came from all of a sudden. I mean, it caught a lot of people off guard. And we're guilty of that, too. You know, you've heard us talk about, we're not getting public input. So on the heels of the wrestling room in the, in Phase Two, where did this come from? Why, it seemed to catch everybody off guard.
Well, I, I've talked with city administration about this for a few years. I think the thing that really brought it to the head was, a year ago, last fall, we did our own facilities assessment and master strategic plan for all of the high school athletic facilities as well as Franklin Field. And through that analysis, concerns were aired about these courts. And then we brought in some additional architects and engineers who affirmed what actually was said back in 2003, when the city and the school district resurfaced, significantly resurfaced it, which was the structural foundational cracks are such that really any work being done, it can't be guaranteed. And, and I think I use the phrase, you know, we're kind of throwing good money at bad. Recently, I shared a bill to patch this spring, all the cracks that can be patched and covered over and smoothed out, you know, the rough edges and that sort of thing. I think it was $3,000 or $4,000 in total, which needs to be done, just to make it as safe as it can be. But I can guarantee you that by fall or next year, most of those cracks will be back, and we'll be looking at probably needing to do that again on the original eight courts.
Okay. And then another subject, you're willing to work with Jeff and, and the Y and everybody, so we can stop all the duplication of services and, and use our resources to the best ability and-
Absolutely.
And youth sports, elderly sports, everything?
Yeah, we have, we have, I, I think we've had a great partnership with YMCA. We have some shared programming with preschool and other things. I've had a couple of conversations with Jeff since he's been here and have talked with Jenny about ideas on how we can partner to try to help build programs. In my world, it's all about providing kids access and exposure to a large variety of activities, some of which should be recreation, education, athletic, et cetera, so that hopefully we can build these programs and ultimately have, you know, greater degrees of success going forward. And so absolutely, we would want to partner. And that's really called for in here.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Yep. To your point on TIF, I can't speak for the board, but I can say, based on our past practice, that we've generally been favorable towards TIFs as long as they're for a reasonable amount of time. And once those TIFs end, they end. And, you know, historically, in my past experiences, a lot of times it was for job creation. But I think Marsh Town has not only needs maybe for job creation, but also significant infrastructure improvements. So that's been our longstanding position on TIF. But I'd be very open, as I'm sure our board would be, to more proactive communications and collaboration going forward so that we know.
And you understand, if we didn't do TIF historically, you'd have your $684,000 in your own budget.
Yeah, we don't, we don't get any less than what we had been getting for the amount of time that TIFs in there.
You're not getting the more, though.
But, well, we'll get more when-
After seven years, 10 years, whichever we do.
But tools have to be used in order to draw people to want to develop here.
We, we need more housing, so more families bring their kids to go to school here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. My name's Jim Gruenian, live at 102 College View Lane. I've been a resident in Marshall Town since 1998. I'm here to ask for your support for the reconstruction of the tennis courts. It's a joint city and school type of project. You know, with my family, I have two kids and a lovely wife. We, none of us had played tennis until 2010. We signed our kids up for Parks and Recs, specifically our son. And since then, we've been playing a lot of tennis as a family. It's been very interesting as I meet more and more people in the, in Marshall Town, to find out how many people actually play tennis and then also play pickleball of all ages. So it's, it's really interesting. Tennis seems to be a sport that you can play across at least three generations of family members. So grandchildren, all the way up to grandparents. And there's very few sports that allow you to do that. So as you've already heard, there's some challenges. We don't have, you know, lighting there. Variety of the courts of those eight are currently not usable, just because of the cracks. They're unsafe. If you actually go play on them, you can have issues. You know, there's, there's ADA access issues, just a variety of things. It's really also interesting, because if you go look at the statistics, tennis is increasing in popularity, not just among young people. It's about a 4% increase between ages six and 12, looking at about a 9% increase between ages 13 and 17. And we're actually seeing that in the increased numbers that are going out for tennis in the high school. You know, I mentioned pickleball earlier. Some other things that we can't do because of the, the status of the courts is we can't host United States Tennis Association events. Those are pretty, pretty good draws for the city. We actually go to variety throughout the state during the summer. It seems like of the, of the tournaments we go to, they're usually a multi-day tournament, so you have overnight stays. And it seems like that, the tournaments we've been going to, about 75 kids per tournament, you have at least two attendees that associate, that come to those. You know, and I did a little research, the United States Tribal Association says, for an overnight, you spend about $142 per person. So if you do the math, you end up at about $43,000 per tournament, right, that comes into the community. From a health standpoint, there's a lot of research out there about tennis is very healthy. It's a very healthy sport. The Cleveland Clinic, which some of you may be familiar with, it's called tennis is an ideal sport for a healthy heart. So it's very good for the community. It's, it's good for lots of people. So Parks and Rec has been- for lots of people. So, Parks and Rec has been great from a tennis standpoint. Like I said, that's how we got involved with tennis to begin with. You know, and I think the other aspect, especially from a youth standpoint, you know, tennis is a sport that if you look at the statistics, you know, about seventy-three percent of those kids are better behaved, eighty-two percent of them are more community-minded than, you know, youth that don't play that sport. And so, it's pretty positive influence on the lives of the youth as, you know. And then it's also very consistent across socioeconomic levels. So, one of the things I'd leave you with on this front, we travel to a lot of cities in, in the state, not just for tennis tournaments, but also for different events. I can tell you, when I look at other cities across the state, similar in size to Marshalltown, whether it's, you know, they, they have better tennis facilities. There's more courts available for the population. I just list off some, Atumwa, Mason City, Newton, Fort Dodge, Grinnell, Pella, you know, Urbendale, Ames, Ankeny, obviously Des Moines. And I mentioned Fort Dodge earlier. So, a lot of the other cities, similar to Marshalltown in size, have much better facilities when it comes to tennis. And I can tell you, it's very, it's something that I'm finding more and more people care about and is more and more important. So, I'm, hopefully you move forward with approving the necessary funding. And once again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim.
Good evening. Bobby Schomo, seventeen oh six Hillcrest Road, Marshalltown. May I read a letter from James Christensen, the coach at MHS?
I think we all up here got that today. Yes.
Do you want it read or?
You, no, you may.
I may? Thank you. Esteemed members of the city council, my name is James Christensen, fourteen oh one West Olive Street. I've been a resident of the Marshalltown since nineteen seventy-nine, working as a teacher and coach in the Marshalltown Community School District for the last seventeen years. I'm writing today to ask you to support the reconstruction of the joint city-school tennis courts. Over the last twenty years, I've witnessed the destruction or conversion of nearly all the tennis facilities in Marshalltown, save for the eight courts at MHS. One indoor court at Elmwood and one court at Riverview. A town that once had twenty-plus usable courts barely has four that are truly suitable for competitive play. However, over the last decade, as the head boys tennis coach, we have over-doubled the participation of our school teams. We average around ninety combined players per year, started a sixty-plus-person tennis academy, and still have a large contingent of adult players. Despite the very poor conditions of our courts and without electricity, running water or restroom facilities, they are still packed on afternoons and evenings with good weather. This summer, when Phase One of the Marshalltown Community School District tennis and pickleball project is complete, we will be halfway to having a jewel of a facility, one unrivaled in central Iowa. That means we'll be halfway to being able to host district and regional high school tournaments, events that bring in hundreds of players, coaches, and spectators. We will be halfway to hosting USTA Youth and Adult Tournaments each summer, bringing in tax dollars and scores of customers to our hotels, gas stations, and restaurants. We'll be halfway to showing prospective citizens and homeowners that Marshalltown is committed to offering top-notch recreational facilities that are safe and enjoyable to use and accessible to all. Please meet us halfway and support us in the reconstruction of the original courts that we've been partnered with since their construction in the nineteen seventies. Sincerely, James Christensen. And then if I might add, I, we're a tennis family. As Mr. Groening was sharing his kid's love of tennis, part of that has been with my middle son, Ryan, who is, had teaching pro at a country club in Scottsdale. Ryan, when he was a high schooler here at Marshalltown, drove three days a week to Ames to get professional lessons to pursue his, his passion. Upon graduating college, he went back to that same instructor for a job as a teaching pro with a desire to actually come back to Marshalltown and to start an academy-level tennis program here in Marshalltown. We spent quite a deal of time trying to, trying to bring that to fruition. What eventually happened for us is it, it, it wasn't doable. We needed to start with usable tennis courts in Marshalltown in order to use the centrality of Marshalltown to attract tennis players from surrounding communities where Ryan could use his skills. I'm a bit disappointed. I lost a son to Scottsdale, Arizona, that I would love to have kept in Marshalltown with a six-digit salary, doing what he did with the support staff, I believe, enabling Marshalltown to be a better all-around community. I'm not going to repeat a lot of things Mr. Groening said or what Mr. Christensen said in the letter or, or our superintendent as well. But I, I am going to try to reiterate that tennis is something that transcends generations. My sons, to this day, continue to play tennis with their grandpa. They show up on the tennis courts and they, they can play together. Now, I'm, I'm a footso, football guy, right? I, I, I'm a soccer guy. I'm, I'm happy with what we've done with the footso courts. But we have systematically eliminated, either through not taking care of or, or transcending their use, every usable tennis court in this town. As I start thinking about Emerson and, and the, the jobs that we would like to attract to our community, some of those higher-paying jobs, I'm going to tell you, one of the avocational things those folks like to do is play tennis. And we give people another reason to live in Ankeny or live in Ames or, or move away from Marshalltown. I, I applaud the school in Martha Island Ty for their commitment to the courts that we started and, and the pickleball courts. But I really challenge you as a council to understand that this, this is a, a significant issue, I believe, for, for, for the health and, and making Marshalltown a vibrant community in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, Bobby, before you go, hey, don't get me wrong. I was, for thirty-one years, I was married to a Neiman.
Yeah.
And that was the premier tennis family in Marshalltown back in the seventies, you know. So, I spent a lot of time at those courts and, you know, my ex-brother-in-law was ranked as a amateur, you know, nationally. So, I get it. I mean, I just, but I'm sitting here looking at numbers, you know, and trying to figure out the biggest bang for the buck. And I understand, and I appreciate what you guys are saying. You know, I get it. I know. I lived that life. You know, I was there. It's, it's not an easy decision, but I do appreciate what you, what all of you are saying.
Thank you, sir. I am taking you wrong, though.
We, we drove our younger daughter over to Ames for the same lessons over there. And my sister still plays competitive tennis. She played for the University of Iowa. I grew up as a tennis family. And I think the city has a moral obligation to continue this kind of input. And I know that in, in those places that we went to, or know we watched Aaron play, including Mason City and Fort Dodge and Newton, that others, other cities and schools have figured out how to have great facilities. And if I might pontificate a little bit about Marshalltown and our school district, when we do things, we do it right. Look at the Roundhouse. We now have the largest and nicest facility in the state of Iowa with the gymnasium space and, and the capacity. Look at our Y, when, when we, we did the Y. And so, if, if we need to replace courts, and by the way, we also lost, I just got a, a text message that we lost two courts at Anson that used to exist to play tennis at. The, the courts that were near JBS got replaced by just one out of Riverside. So we have really shrunken the court space down to, to the point where the school district is going to have to do something there. Any other public comment?
Well, Joe, I'm, I'm just glad you mentioned that, that, you know, we're not alone in taking away tennis courts, that you reminded the public that the school system themselves took two courts away behind Anson Elementary. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm just saying, for whatever reason, we're not the only guilty party here.
Other public comment? Does staff want direction on this one?
Yeah. I mean, my, our goal coming into this tonight was to have this basically wrapped up and, and ready to go. If you're saying, I think Councilmember Martin said that this, both the quiet zones and the tennis courts deserve further discussion, we, we can try and put them on the February third agenda. Maybe at the very end, if we don't get it to them in an hour, they can continue on to February tenth. But this is something that, it, it can't continue on for much longer. There needs to be a decision made here at some point.
I'm not sure what kind of continued discussion we need. Or could I ask Councilor Martin what type of discussion you'd suggest?
The city of, city council is charged with many responsibilities. Amongst them, recovery, maintenance, economic development, accessibility amongst neighborhoods. I'm just saying we need to pause and, and consider the collaboration that we do. I appreciate that fully. I've been a member of, and an employee of the school district, the community college district, and now the city. There comes a time, and timing is everything, I grant you. If this project is to continue, the timing is now, is soon, very soon. I'm just wondering if there isn't a way to amortize this over a bit, knowing we have some pinchpoints in FY twenty-one and so on, due to those other duties of this, of the city. The Highway fourteen corridor improvements, yep, that's important, downtown streets inside. We have a lot of things coming at us, and there are a lot of moving parts. That's, that's the very nature of the city business. What I'm saying is we need some balance. We balance, we need balance between young and old. We need to maintain our collaboration. Maybe those need to be looked at from time to time, and to assess respective responsibilities, obligations, alerts, forward-thinking, and so on. So, I just think that amortization, it could be one way to go on this. I'm not opposed to it. I never have been. But it's a matter of finances and timing, I think.
I look at our, at the year twenty-one and the year twenty-two, and, and I agree with you, Councilor Martin, that, yeah, it doesn't get any easier in the next year. It's, as a matter of fact, our capital improvement funds go higher. I would move that we put it to a vote as it's written on the, presented to us from the city administrator. And, and let's just decide it at this point whether we're going to do it or not. And so I would move that we, and, and is this appropriate? So, I would suggest that taking the preliminary fiscal year twenty-twenty-one figures as presented to us by the city administrator and, and that we would approve those or that we would vote on those for approval.
Is there a second to that? Any further discussion? Somehow a dead horse comes to mind. Let's go ahead and do the roll call.
A little bit.
Where we at?
Moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the proposal, the cap, capital improvement plan as proposed with both of those items on it.
For all four years, the way it sits now?
So, so...
Five years.
Yes. So, the as presented means long-term, this is what would be shown for future years, but budgetarily, what we'd be programming off of is this first column, which is fiscal year twenty-one preliminary.
With a lot of asterisks because of that three million nine out there and a few other things.
As, as we do this, we're approving this CIP right here. Each individual item on there has to be approved at a later date, correct?
Correct. Everything on here that's borrowing, we ultimately have to have a public hearing to borrow for it. So, it's this, you, you all saying this is our policy for our budget document and giving the direction to, to staff to proceed is the first step that's necessary for us to be able to come back with the, the next steps.
We're just making it so Diana can move forward tonight, right?
Well, I, I think this goes back to the hot-button issue thing, too. Like, don't give us direction to do something and waste our time on something if you don't want to do it. And so, this is really that first thing tonight. If it's not in the budget document, we're not going to work on it. But if it is in the budget document, we're going to work on it. And so, that's the, that's that hot button of, are you, you know, what do we need to do if it's in the budget document? But that's really what we're trying to determine tonight, is what is it we'd be moving forward with in preparing for fiscal year that starts on July first of twenty-twenty.
Can I interject a question, just, just only because I, I have a question on one other item. And that's the, in, it happens to be in my ward with the fourth and Meadow Lane. And I think when we had the discussion on that, and, and I need a clarification, even though that's going to be a borrowed amount. And I think that if I understand it right, that's going to be paid by, with the, the funds raised through, through the sewer system.
Yes.
And I believe at one time, I heard that we may need to increase our, our funds to, to be able to, to pay for this. Is that correct?
I think this one is planned, but ultimately, we will be bringing forward some contracts for a stormwater rate study and a sewer rate study, as we haven't had any active study or rate changes on stormwater for, I think, nearly two years. I think as of July first, it'll be two years. And then on wastewater, I think, one year as of January first. So, so I believe this one was included in what that, what the fees needed to be set at as they are right now.
Okay. And, and, and the reason that, that's caution is, is because of the, that fact that the study that we just read, which, which called for a four-point-five percent raise on, on the, the water bill, plus a one percent raise on the, on the sewer rate. And, and I didn't want to get caught up in that and, and okay this project, although it's dear to my heart, as you know, because of a lake setting thirty feet from my house that children will walk through, and they have walked through for six years. So, I, I, I have to still use caution of, of raising rates on, on the public that, that I'm very familiar with what that impact does because of, of three daughters and seven grandchildren that all live here. So, I felt that that warranted a question of, is this going to be paid off? And are we, do we have finances to do this without a raise?
Yeah. I would say my answer right now is yes, I believe so, but I'd need to check on that.
And if I change my mind on this vote and vote for the tennis courts to stay in here, at the very least, can we redo a better contract agreement with the school system about the maintenance, the ownership, and the usage?
Yes. We'd certainly want to have a formal twenty-eight E agreement that spelled things out.
Rather than that seventy-four agreement?
Mm-hmm.
I apologize. I, I needed a clarification on that. And I, and I know it was kind of out of the order, out of order, but you can proceed.
Okay. Let's go back to the roll.
Hoop.
Yes, if I can vote later on individuals.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin? Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Very good. I think we saved some time in the February meetings.
Yes, we just did.
Yeah.
Onto the last discussion item, which is the two thousand and twenty-one budget.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So, first thing I want to show you is our taxable So, as you recall, this is the first year, fiscal year twenty-one is the first year that our property tax valuations are affected by the tornado. So, we were predicting pretty gloom and doom, and it's not quite as bad as we thought. So, the residential properties actually went up by fifteen million. The commercial went up by ten million. The industrial went down by about two-point-eight million, and most of that is from Lenox. And the multi-residential went down by five million. So, you can kind of see the, the charts here. So you can kind of see the charts here going up and down. And then over to your right is the rollback. So for residential, it continues to roll back from 57% to 55%. Multi-residential keeps going down every year by 3.75%, and will continue to do so. The commercial and industrial is locked in at 90%, and that's what we were supposed to get the backfill from, from the state legislature, but they do have to appropriate it every year, and that amount keeps getting lower and lower. So that's kind of an overview of the valuations. Any questions on that?
Diana, you're showing a 3% growth? Yeah.
I didn't calculate it that way, but if that's 18 million divided by...
So it's growth capped at 3% on your right-hand side?
For the...
That's state code.
Okay.
Okay, that's what the state is saying, 3%?
That, well, they're saying we're capped at that, so, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. I wasn't sure where you were looking. Any other questions on this? If not, we will go on to the next document. So the general fund. So this is kind of the daily programs that we run in the city, has our, most of our salaries and utilities, insurance costs, et cetera. I did outline a lot of the assumptions in this document, but would like to go over, just hit on a few. So the unions did negotiate their union contracts. They haven't been ratified yet, so I cannot share those with you at this point in time, but we did do estimates for those. However, the non-union staff, we built in a 2.5% increase for cost-of-living adjustments and step increases. The other thing is that for municipal fire and police, this is set statewide as well, so the employer's share is going from 24% to 25%. Ipers stayed the same. The road use tax, which we will talk about in a little bit, this is money that we transfer out of the road use tax to the general fund to cover wages for the Public Works Department, and a portion for our Human Services Director, Finance Director, and City Administrator. The city will continue to reimburse the mileage at the state rate, which is currently 39%, I mean 39 cents a mile. If the state raises their rate, or lowers it, then the city follows. As I mentioned, the backfill does get lower and lower every year, so to be conservative, we budgeted 80%. Last year, we budgeted 93% and didn't reach that, so the recommendation from the Department of Management team was to use 80% to be conservative. So as you, on the next document that I'm going to show you, that breaks out function by function of each budget, you may notice that there's not very much revenue offsetting the expenses for each department. The property tax and hotel motel tax, things like that, all run through Function 6021, which is the Finance Department. So we keep them all in one place. So when building the budget, we went ahead and used the full 810 regular levy and the 27 emergency levy, like we have for years and years. That's very common for cities to do. One of the big things this year is that the fire department does show a decrease of $70,000 in revenue due to the cancellation of the EMS response contract from Unity Point. That actually ended this current fiscal year in January. I did adjust the hotel motel tax revenue. We originally budgeted $424,000, looks like it's going to come in at $495,000, so that's an increase of $71,000. However, we do turn around and give 67% of that to Convention and Visitors Bureau. So that is only a net increase of $23,000. New this year, we did add the planning and zoning position. You originally had approved that to be paid out of loss for this fiscal year, and we had budgeted, we had moved funds over for that, but because we're doing two-years budgets, we're reestimating fiscal year '20, and we're putting forth the fiscal year '21 budget, we decided that fiscal year '20 is looking a little bit better than we thought originally as well, so we're not going to have to use the lost money to cover that for this fiscal year. However, it is an ongoing cost, so we put it in the general fund budget for next year. So when all is said and done, for fiscal year '21, we are in a deficit. We are $111,000 short. So we came up with some options for the council to consider. So things we've talked about before, we talked about discontinuing the contract with MCTV, so that would save us $40,000. Due to the summer blast program, we thought we could raise fees on that, because we're not really very competitive citywide. Let me get my paper out here. Currently, the YMCA charges $145 per week for a Y membership, or $195 per week for a non-member. If you were going to pay for private in-home care, you'd probably be looking at $110 per week. So we feel like raising the weekly fee from $85 to $95 would be helpful, so that would generate another $10,000 during the summer months, for 10 weeks. Once the Coliseum opens in the spring of 2021, we can increase our capacity for summer blasts from 100 to 125 kids. That would generate another $9,500 for fiscal year '21. We'd like you to consider increasing our parking tickets by $5. That would generate another $17,500. And to increase rental registration fees to landlords for about $12,500. And then if you could consider putting in $21,000 out of local option sales tax council-designated. Usually in the past, when we have a little shortfall, you have contributed for that. And then this chart down below is actually what the landlord registration fees would be. So you can see the current rate is here, and then the new rate, and how much it would generate. So the change is $12,480 for that, 15% increase overall. I will take questions in a little bit, I just kind of wanted to go through all the materials first. Sure.
Do we, going way back up to the top, you budgeted all vacant positions for 12 months. Do we still have vacant positions?
Yes, there's always turnover, there's people retiring, leaving.
Do we have vacant right now that we're not filling?
Well, not intentionally not filling, we're just...
Yeah, there are no positions where there is like a freeze or anything like that. I think what she's saying is, like, there naturally is turnover and transition throughout the year, and we're budgeting every position that's currently approved for 100% of the year.
It's not that we have a vacant position, and a new hire would add to our cost.
Right, it's just that, you know, if somebody retires, you may leave it open...
I misunderstood that.
For eight weeks, because you can't fill it that quickly, by the time it goes through all the processes.
Diana, with regard to the MCTV, I know we get from MediaCom, $200,000 a year we pay out to MCC, $40,000. Is there, if we were to do that, how fast would that go? Would that take effect the next fiscal year?
July 1.
At July 1. Does that allow for a transition in your estimate?
Well, that's what we're asking for, the cameras and the CIP plan.
Yeah, I mean, there's, if this is something that you want to consider, it's something then that we'll have Chad with BDH working on immediately, to make sure that that transition is seamless, so that, come for that first meeting in July, there's, you know, as few issues as you can plan for.
On down the line, however, either way we go, if we extend or cut the contract, we're in for further expenses in the future, for whatever we do, for equipment especially.
So equipment, all we're looking at right now is $10,000 to replace the cameras, up to digital cameras. The actual recording is through our website, and it's a function that we're already paying for. So there's probably a few more smaller equipment things to be considering about how that system would work. But I should say, this is talking about it being streamed live on our website. This is not talking necessarily about live broadcast on MediaCom yet. Ultimately, that's the piece that I didn't want to spend Chad's time investigating if this was not anywhere that the council wanted to go.
And Diana, these, I'm assuming, these options, this is what you and Jessica and the entire staff came up with? These were the biggest bang for the buck?
Right.
Are there other things out there? I mean, obviously, there are, but this is what you guys feel are...
Right.
...the only way to get to this 111?
I wouldn't, I mean, there's, you can do anything. There's so many different revenue things that we could be talking about in terms of increasing all sorts of fees and things. These were the ones that seemed like the most reasonable at this point in time. I mean, one thing that we haven't talked about in total is that, you know, we could implement a franchise fee on electric and gas utilities, and that would probably solve having a deficit in the general fund for a while. I mean, so there's other things that we're not bringing forward, based on reasonability, I guess, or reasonableness of what you would likely want to consider.
Other questions or comments?
So I have a few more documents to share with you.
I think, to be clear, we're asking right now, or you need to tell us you need more time to digest it, if that proposal to fill that $111,000 deficit is not something you like, please speak up, and so this will carry on to another meeting, because our intention is not to carry it forward if there's no one saying that needs to happen.
I guess, are these realistic? I mean, is the police force writing enough parking tickets to justify the $5 increase? I mean, are we going to get a big bang for the buck? I mean, do you really, can you really get 125 kids? And are those families able to pay $95? I mean, are there a lot of assumptions here? Or you've beta-tested these, that you know that these numbers are real?
So certainly on the summer blast stuff, we did beta-test it, if that's the term you want to use, and ultimately, there were waiting lists for, I think, almost every week, you know, for the past year. And so I think even the year before, when we were in the Coliseum, there were waiting lists. And so I think it's a matter of, can people afford $10 per week? You know, that's not the thing that we've beta-tested, but ultimately, we know that where we are in the marketplace of Marshalltown summer care, and that we are by far the cheapest option, and will continue to be the cheapest option at $95 per week. The parking tickets, Diana ran those numbers, and it was a few years ago that I ran some numbers that showed, I think, 75% of our tickets are paid within the first 90 days. And so it's not, we do certainly have a lot of overdue debt and things on parking tickets that we pursue collections of, but most people who get a ticket pay it pretty quickly, and so we're not having to apply extra dollars towards debt collection. And then the rental registration fee to landlords, that was one where we felt like the, so we reallocated some of Michelle's wages out of the Section 8 program, and back into planning and into rental registration, where, you know, the majority of her time is being spent. And so when those changed, then the total cost of those programs both changed, and that's really some of the rationale behind, you know, proposing an increase there, as well as, you know, the way the scale is formed, is that that first unit, a single-family home, you know, is the most time-intensive of any inspection that the inspectors do.
Yeah, and to be honest with you, Jessica, I don't have a problem with the, I mean, if they're renting a house for $1,000 a month, you know, and their fee's going to go up to 40 bucks, I got no problem with that. That's the part, I don't have a problem with any of that part there. I don't know how anybody else feels.
Other input?
This is Bethany. So I'm in favor of everything on the list. I think it might help families if we would make smaller increases more regularly. I don't know how often we increase the fees on summer blast. I know it's a super-popular program, and people love it. So I know several families that do that every summer. So I would recommend just smaller increases over the next, just regularly. Every year should probably be some increase on that, just to keep up with wages for staff. And then I wish there were another way to deal with MCTV. That's my only comment. I voted against doing anything with it this year, so I would prefer not to use that one. If there's another way to find money in the budget, or use more of our local option, council-designated funds. Thank you.
Does all ticket revenue go to the general fund? So speeding tickets?
We don't do speeding tickets.
Huh?
We don't do speeding tickets, just parking tickets. Speeding tickets is...
Is parking only?
Yep.
So fire zone, overtime, all parking violations?
Right.
If we hired another parking person, could we offset their revenue, or their cost to the city? Could they, I guess, could they be cost-neutral, and plus, cover this deficit? Could we, could they pay for themselves, plus pay for this deficit?
I don't know how many tickets are not being written, so that would be hard to say. You know, you're projecting some, hire somebody and go out and write.
I'm just thinking out loud, Diana.
I don't know.
Curious question would be the number of incremental parking tickets you got when you hired the part-time focused staff to concentrate on that, right? You could at least...
Good question. We went from half-time to full-time, didn't we?
Yep.
Yes, we did.
And how many tickets went up?
I don't know the answer to that one.
So do you have to have action on this?
There's not just him writing tickets, though. The parking officer, the regular police officers are writing tickets as well. It's not just him writing tickets.
You need to go to Al's house, then?
But Jessica, you need direction on this tonight?
Well, I mean, if you want to keep discussing it, then I think that's what we're looking for. We were hoping that we could solidify this. Otherwise, I mean, the reality of it is, if you don't want to do this, we're back to the drawing board on how you fill this gap, unless you just want to say, use local option sales tax to cover it all. I don't recommend doing that, because ultimately, this is a continuing trend from year to year, where we do see that there's always this small operational deficit. And I do agree with Diana that more than likely, in this budget time next year, we could be saying, hey, we don't actually need that $22,000 transfer in, because we, you know, things change in terms of expenses and things, so... But, you know, we do want to get the general fund to a point where we, as staff, know what we need to do with it, whether it's bringing back additional proposals for revenue, or for reductions from all departments, or a specific department, or what that might be.
Okay, well, personally, I'm okay with everything on here, and I'm not going to make a motion, but for a little discussion here is, I want more discussion on the MCTV. I'd like to see, you know, all the numbers from switching over. You know, what's it really going to cost us, you know, if we switch that over, and what's the community impact? So I guess, minus that one, and then later, you know, I mean, obviously, we need to move forward this year with this, and then I guess I'd be in favor of doing what's on here, as a stopgap, minus the MCTV one. We can increase rental registrations a little even higher?
21%?
Yeah, you can.
We were averaging, what, 15% increase, right?
You can. I think what we want to be cautious in how high we go up, and so that's where I did show that dollar change and percent change on the other side.
Right.
I think we, we want to make sure that changes correspond with additional costs that have come to the program.
And that's per-year, per-unit, right?
Correct.
Right.
And 30, I think, Michelle told me 33% of the housing stock in Marshalltown is a rental unit?
Michelle is shaking her head, yes.
Yeah?
So, from a higher dollar, you get higher-quality landlords. My opinion would be, my only comment would be, have we done a gut check with regards to a new rate, and what that compares to in local other communities? Are we just making an increase to make an increase, or has that been compared against what other cities charge from a rental rate?
Um, it hasn't been compared. We're making an increase to make an increase, because there's been some additional salary allocation to that function, which we believe is appropriately designated there, and to, to account for really how much it does take for that single-family unit.
So, I guess that'd be my only ask. I agree on the MCTV, and my only ask would be on this unit, right? If we're just changing it to $40 on the one unit, and everybody else is charging $60, are we truly missing on something? I just, we should take a deeper look at that to make, just a gut check. That's my only ask.
Michelle Smutheimer, Housing Community Development Director. A few years ago, you know, we did look at fees very closely, and, and had a lot of conversation with landlords as a result of that. Did do an increase at that point. That's when we developed, added of, well, really, the second tier to our matrix of things. Comparing the fees across the board to other communities is very challenging, because a lot of cities do structure things differently. Many say, you pay your fee when you get your inspection, the year you get it, but then you maybe don't pay for the years that you don't get inspected. We annualize, so every year, you're paying, even though you're not inspected every year. So, certainly, we can kind of continue to check with that on others, as we would when we get into the actual recommendations of how this is adopted. This was kind of just an initial gut instinct of where it could be. And we would put our rates into effect. It's, we're on a calendar year, and so, we would try to implement that formally at the tail end of 2020, to go into effect for calendar year 2021.
And Michelle, the fear is, if I don't want to pay the rate, I don't tell you I'm renting the house. I don't tell you I'm renting the apartment?
Um, you know, certainly, we always have properties that go unregistered. And we do, we did implement, that was one of the reasons we implemented the fees, as you may recall, it's been about two years, maybe ago now already, for unregistered occupied units. They have a $500 fee, as opposed to a $50 if you just want to start a rental unit. So, that has, I think, done some of the work that we intended, where people were operating without being registered.
Thanks, Michelle.
So, we will bring this back to another meeting in the future, and hopefully, be able to resolve this.
Unless there's a motion to approve it? And then, also, if we do, if we don't approve it tonight, if you do bring it back, can you have the alternative cost to the MCTV?
The, the, there, I mean, the alternative cost is the $10,000
Which is in the CIP.
for the cameras, yeah. Because we're talking about, it's not maintaining MCTV as it is today. It's going to a whole new platform of streaming online. And so, when you look at it that way, I mean, it's, it's some new equipment, but that's, that's all it is. So, I don't, I would probably bring back to you the memo that I had previously prepared, but there's, there's nothing new that I could provide at this point.
Can I just ask a question? I've been sitting here a long time. And can we just spend less? Is that?
So, I, I would encourage you, you know, one of the next items in the budget packet is the budget comparison report for the general fund. And even if you don't look item by item on things, and you just go to what that comparison is from the current-year budget, current-year amended, to next year, there are maybe two departments where you're looking at any significant change. Some are even less than what they were in this current year. And so, I would say, you all should be very proud that you have staff who truly understands that the resources are not here to continue to grow, and we continue to find ways, year after year after year, to keep cutting. And you can only do that so much. Where we've been able to avoid cutting is personnel. That's, that's the one area that we've been able to not touch. But that's where we have to go. If you're wanting us to eliminate $40,000, and there's not another set of fees that we can raise, we're going to be cutting somewhere, or we're going to be cutting something that is a priority. I mean, that's, that's realistically where we are. $40,000 is, is wages. I mean, that's what it is. So, we're, we're realistically trying to stop spending by getting rid of some of these contracts that are things where we have money going outside of the organization, where it could be staying in the organization. So, that's really been our strategy over the last two to three years, is to, to really review all the money that's going out, and figuring, what is it that we could propose that stays in? So, it's, it's an ongoing challenge, but, but ultimately, you guys have to, to be part of that decision as well. We can make recommendations to you all day. And we'll certainly, if you're saying you don't want to cut MCTV, we'll come back to you with some recommendations for, you know, how we find another $40,000. But as you can see, you know, you increased rental rates, and that's only, what was it? 16,000, 13,000? You know, there's, there's only so many of those things, and there's only so many fiscal years where you can keep doing that, before you realize you just have, you have what you have before you, and you have to make do with it.
Well, I think, in order to stay away from that conversation of, of any personnel, which we're already short, to get the services done in, in, in the community of, I would rather opt to, with the question being MCTV, and, and that seems to be the whole holdup. And I think we'd all agree that we'd like to see more input. But in order to this, to move this forward, why don't we just go ahead and make a motion, and use, and, and kick in 40 grand out of local option sales tax, and, and just move it forward? I mean, obviously, we, we have that kind of money in the local option sales tax.
Right, but, but you understand, by using local option sales tax every year to fund the deficit, we're living beyond our means.
Well, I understand that.
You know, I mean, I mean, we got to figure, we got to have a hard look at this. I mean, I'm new to this, but I'm going to get up to speed pretty quick. And we got to look at this and figure out why a city of 27,000 can't balance their general fund budget? I mean, what am I missing here? I mean, we're going to, every year, it's local option sales tax. If we didn't have that local option sales tax, we would be laying off people, right?
We, we would try and do everything else we could to trim here or there, and bring you back more revenue increases before touching personnel. But it's, it's, it's this ongoing cycle of, you know, where, where do you cut?
And, and Mike, I agree. We're in it, we're between a rock and a hard place here. We got to make a decision tonight or the next meeting.
Yeah.
We got to move forward.
I feel your pain of, of learning, and, and it, it's going to, it took me, it's, it's taken me six years, and I learn every day. So, it, and I, I, I know where you are, because I've been there. And, and there's not an easy solution to what we're trying to do, because we are trying to grow.
And I agree.
As you grow, you, you have these pains. And, and what I'm trying to do is get us past this, this hump, knowing that, that we always have to face this.
Okay, so we have time on the MCTV thing. We can talk about that. So, if Mike, if we move forward with Mike, we can say, do 61,000 out of, do we have 61,000 in lost?
Yes, and that's a topic for the next meeting. Actually, we're going to go over the lost account.
That's the February 3 noon meeting?
Yes.
And you'll get to the, you'll get to, to the understanding that we're going to go through this again for, for property tax relief.
Yeah.
So, we could move forward tonight? What you're saying is do, for tonight, do 61,777 of lost? Leave everything else the same? Put MCTV on the table to discuss it in more detail?
It gets us past, it gets us
Gets us through tonight?
Yeah, it gets us to that point where, where, where we're all going to be satisfied that that's what we want to do with MCTV.
I don't think we're going to get there.
Yeah, I would also, I'm sorry, Beth, Bethany, go ahead. I don't mean to interrupt you.
I just, I don't think we're going to, it sounds like there is no more information to gather. So, we just have to decide. And I, I move that we accept this proposal and vote on it tonight. And just say, yes, we're going to move forward. This is our plan, and look at transitioning away from MCTV. Because we've been talking about it. I never heard a word from the public I asked Republican put on it. And I, I know there are people who watch it, but I also know that technology is changing so fast, and people are adapting, and they will adapt even more rapidly if we just make a decision.
I second Council and Councilperson Waren's motion there. I hate this financial haggling, whether it's in my own home or here. I think sometimes you just have to do it, and make those hard decisions, and move forward, because I think the more we talk about it, the more it, the lines get blurred. And I am against using that, that much of the local option sales tax. So, I would second the motion put forth by Councilman, Councilwoman Waren.
Okay. Point of order, Your Honor? Did, did Mike make a motion?
No.
He suggested it.
To get us past this, this whole thing. What I was hearing was, and, and changed speed on me here a little bit, but what I was hearing, we were, we had some confusion on whether we wanted to do this. Now, if the motion is to go forward with the way it's proposed, I'm, I was just throwing out an option to get us past all that.
Mr. Mayor, am I out of order in asking for further input from, from the audience? I'd like to have Mark Cosmason comment, at least, at this stage. And I know we're getting ready for a vote and so on. I think it's important and timely that we hear from him.
If he's willing.
Thank you. I really appreciate the hard work of our city administrator and our finance director in putting things together and working on the budget, and looking at the budget comparison, which you'll take a look at in a few minutes. It's 38 pages long, and I understand and appreciate the, the value in balancing a budget. My concern is that the MCTV issue is more than just covering the city council meetings. This channel was established to provide good, positive video programming, in addition to the city council meetings, the school board meetings, positive things that are happening, what the police department's doing, the, the fire department, park and rec, all these other things that are positive things that are going on in Marshalltown, and that will all come to an end July 1, if you don't continue to fund it. And the money comes from the cable TV franchise fees, and MCTV only takes a small portion of that, that $40,000. So, and as far as public input, you all received a letter from Conrad DeJarden, which I thought was very well-thought-out, explaining the channel. And I think he did an eloquent job in explaining that. So, I, I think the thought that it's just a matter of swapping out a couple of cameras and streaming the city council meetings, that's a small component of what MCTV does as far as providing good programming 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We've got a precious resource that's been given to us by the cable company, and I think we need to cherish it and continue to do whatever we can to see it grow, and continue to provide quality programming. Once the funding goes away, that other programming will, will cease.
Can I ask the question of, how, is it just the cable fee and the city funding that funds the channel? I mean, the franchise fee, as well as the funding that the city has put in, is that the sole support for the channel at this point?
It's my understanding, and I don't have all the particulars, but the, the channel is housed at Iowa Valley Continuing Education. And a fee is paid to them, but I think what we're receiving as a city of Marshalltown, for the money that we spend with them, we're getting far more for our, our investment dollar.
I, I, so, the franchise fee and what we give is one and the same. So, IVCC does have some overhead costs for the management, management allocations that they, they, they are covering, and that's their cost related to it. Okay. Thank you.
But I think if you were to take this $40,000 and take a look at what the city of Marshalltown and the residents of Marshalltown, not only the cable subscribers who are paying for it, but all the residents of Marshalltown, what they're receiving in quality video programming that's positive, as we move forth after the tornado and, and all of the damage, we're, we're getting a, a huge bang for our buck. And I think it's something that we need to continue to support. And I would hope that with 38 pages of budget line items, that we'd be able to maybe tweak a few things to make up that $40,000, and continue to support MCTV.
Thank you.
So, to, to be clear on one part of my proposal is, I don't disagree that there's quality programming being provided. I just think that it's not always city-specific, and if there are other organizations who value that, they can certainly pay for that through IVCC, that the city doesn't always have to be the one to cover that cost. And so, I'll, I'll pick on 13th Street, because I see Amber here, you know, that I think MCTV has come to some 13th Street events and done videos there. That, does the city need to be the one to pick that cost up? Or can 13th Street as a district, if they find value in having that service performed, pay for a videographer to be there, whether it be MCTV or another videographer? I would look at that the same thing as, as through the city. If we find that we need a videographer for some sort of situation, we would look at, you know, how would we get that service provided to us? Would it be MCTV, or would it be an outside videographer? So, I think that's where it's, it really, it's about choices. This is, this is a fee that's going to, you know, an organization to provide a service for everybody, but should the city be paying for everybody to receive that service?
Other discussion?
So, I guess my only comment would be, goal number two, enhance Marshalltown's public image is what that directly ties to. Therefore, I would argue, or motion to amend the motion presented by Councilmember Waren to do as what was suggested by Councilmember Gowdy, to up the local option sales tax contribution, and removing the MCTV portion of that from the savings of the general fund.
Is there a second to that motion to amend?
Yes.
Let's call the roll on that motion to amend.
Motion to amend. Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Waren?
No.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Carried.
Okay, that did carry. And if there's no further discussion about the motion as amended, let's do the roll call on that as well.
Motion as amended. Hoop?
Can you read the motion, then?
To accept the plan as amended to cover the MCTV costs with local option sales tax monies.
So, that would be leave it as it is?
No, we're, we're, we're going to take that MCTV out of, out of this and then, we're going to, to fill that 40,000 void, we're going to use the local option sales tax for now to go to 61,777.
For a one-time deal? Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Waren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Very good, that carried as well, and that ends our discussion items. So, we're now at the point of public comment?
Okay.
Nope, there's a whole bunch more budget items.
Getting hungry.
A lot more stuff.
I should have had a bigger lunch.
Okay, all right. So, the 38-page document that was referred to, yes, is broken out between our actual for fiscal year '19, and then our budget that was originally adopted for '20, and then our reestimated '20, and then our '21. But I gave you this index of funds and functions. So, this is how our budget lays out. And so, when we actually do the budget documents, we have to basically, you'll see, you'll see the detail, but these also roll up into categories. So, anything that starts with a 1,000 in this area is public
categories. So anything that starts with a $1,000 in this area is public safety. So why that's important is because the auditor doesn't like us to exceed the budget amount for these categories. So there's multiple categories. So you have public safety, the $2,000s are public works, the $3,000s are health and social services, the $4,000s are culture and recreation, the $5,000s are community and economic development, and then the $6,000s are the general government. So throughout the year, you know, maybe the city clerk might be higher and the finance department might be lower, but overall, when you sum these together, as long as you're not exceeding the budget, then you get a good comment from the auditors. So, and that's why we're doing the budget amendment now, too, because things have happened. We've had more tornado expenses that have incurred, even though that's in a different fund. But as the year goes on, we can make these little adjustments, and hopefully at the end of the year, we'll do the budget amendment and we'll come in under. So that's what that piece of paper is all about. Any questions on this?
You're moving money legally between funds?
Well, it's the same fund, it's just a different function. Yep. Where'd my counsel go? Are there things open here? Okay.
I think you might have closed the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. So here's the budget comparison report, and we're not gonna go over this in detail unless you have any specific questions. So again, it's by function, it outlines what category we're talking about. And then the first section is revenues, and then it goes into expenses. So you can kind of see operational-wise how each function is doing. Again, total activity for actual, for fiscal year 19, the budgets, year-to-date activity, the reestimated, and then FY '21. So, you know, we just have status quo programming, we're not adding any new programming. This is just what it costs to operate between wage increases, inflation, you have utility cost increases, et cetera. So does anybody have any specific questions on this document?
Without going through all 38 pages, are there any red flags we should be brought to our attention?
That's what I outlined in your memo.
Okay. So that was everything in the memo. There's nothing else?
A lot of things are our best guess estimate. Who's gonna retire, we don't know, what their payout's gonna be, et cetera. Okay, I have no questions on this. We'll go on. Can you pull up the council agenda? Jessica? So in building the general fund budget, we have transfers, and two of the transfers come in from a levy. One is employee benefit levy, and the other one is the police and fire retirement fund. So we levy the taxes, and then whatever it's costing us in the general fund, we transfer the money into the general fund. So what runs through the employee benefits fund is the health insurance, FICA tax, IFRS contribution, health insurance, workers' comp, unemployment, and retirement savings account for people that retire. And then the police and fire retirement, that's for police and fire staff. The rate is, was 24.41, and it is increasing to 25.31. Again, this is statewide, set by the state. So you can see the amount of transfer that we're sending into the general fund to cover those expenses. So this is kind of the fund balance of the cash accounts. So at June 30th, we had $2.7 million in employee benefits, with our revision be estimating at June 30th, 20 at $2.7 million, and then estimating $2.8 million at the end of '21. And the police and fire retirement, you can see that increase as well. So these provide a little cushion for catastrophic events. The city does self-insure, so. Any questions on these?
And again, these are things that are going to move forward in the budget process as you're seeing them here tonight, unless you bring up an objection and would like to see it further.
But for my benefit, being new, there's nothing we can change on that. On that one, that's state mandated, right?
Right. Those numbers are the numbers. They're, yeah.
So the next item is, we're gonna talk about road use tax. So we collect the tax from vehicle registration and gas taxes that are paid at the pump, and it's a portion based on our census. So what comes out of road use tax is the capital improvements that we talked about earlier, and the transfer to the general fund for our public works staff. So it's reimbursing for their gross salaries, as well as that small portion for the finance director, HR director, and city administrator. So if you look at the budget, expenses do exceed the revenues in fiscal year '20 by a million and exceed, and are exceeded by $2 million in fiscal year '21. But as you recall, we have that $6 million balance at June 30th of 2019 that's rolling in. Because of the tornado, we deferred a lot of projects. So now we're just trying to catch up. So we're just spending down that fund balance. So any questions?
By law, how long can we have that in there? I mean, is there a law that says we can't have that excess?
No.
Okay.
Okay, new this year, the legislature passed Senate File 634, known as the Truth in Taxation Bill. So in the past, we've always talked about our property tax levy rate. So the legislature came in and said, you need to tell the public what you're actually getting, an increase in dollars. So they designed this new form that needs to go before the public. So for fiscal year '20, our valuations were $878,000, and this is what we levied in this blue area for these particular levies. There's a few levies that aren't included. That's the capital improvement, or the capital levy plan, the debt service levy, and anything that's voted on, such as the library levy. So they just wanted to say, okay, if this was your current year, and the same amount for next year, what would the rate do? So in this case, with our new valuations, for the same levies at the same amount, it would go down by almost 40 cents. But that's not realistic, because that doesn't give us any inflation factor at all. So our new taxable levy is 904 billion, or 904 million, and these are the dollars that they were requesting. So we have the regular general levy, which is the 810 levy. So that's just a computation.
To be clear, we're requesting the full 810, not the 2% growth on that to provide the most revenue to the general fund.
So your transit levy, this is money that's needed just to supplement the enterprise fund. They don't have quite enough to cover, and we'd like to have a little surplus in there in case a bus breaks down, because, you know, it's nothing for a $50,000 repair bill for a bus. The Fisher Community Center, staying the same at $100,000. Insurance is going down slightly. We kind of overestimated last year, so we're reducing that. The emergency management commission, they told us they were gonna have a 4% increase, so we put that in there. The emergency levy is 27 cents. Again, that's the maximum that it can be, and we always do take that 27 cents rate. Police and fire retirement, I just went over FICA and IFRS and other employee benefits. That's what we need to make the general fund whole.
Diana?
Yep.
Two questions. Why did the transit go down? What is that, 40? What is 30? What is that, 30-some thousand?
So last year, we were trying to accomplish the same thing by having an ending fund balance of $50,000 to set aside in case there are repairs. Well, they didn't spend as much in fiscal year '19.
So you don't need as much to build the cushion, because it's already there?
Right.
And then the other one, the supportive local emergency management commission? We don't actually give them that money, right? Because they're 28, or they're their own taxing entity now, right? But by law, we can still...
There's the Marshall County Communications Commission, which is their own taxing entity, and then there's the Local Emergency Management Commission, which is a wholly separate entity, but oversees, gets the tax dollars to distribute to the communications commission. So they're two different things with two different...
Well, I just want to make sure I understand this. We're not taxing just because legally we can. Once they form that 911 commission, that's not what this is.
This is not supporting that. It's supporting the emergency management office. Yep.
Thank you.
So, yeah, the Fisher Community Center, that's just a pass-through. We levy for it, get the revenue, pass it right on. Same thing for the Local Emergency Management So there has to be a public hearing, and the council has to approve if it's going to exceed 2%. So right now, we're at 2.47%. So if you are in agreement with these levy rates, it will need to go to a public hearing. So that's what we'll ask you to set at the next meeting, to set the public hearing for later.
One thing I would like to point out, you know, we did have a draft of this in our strategic planning session. We were about 4%. And so that was just some rough estimated numbers. And then, as you can see, when we got down into it, there's a lot of these levies where we didn't need quite as much, or with transit, I think that's just one of the largest increases that really helps this picture as a whole. So this is an improved picture from what we gave you as an original estimate.
You mean decreases? Largest decrease?
Yeah.
So going back to the valuations, again, last year, based on the valuations, we're at 13.42. And with these higher valuations for '21, and these costs, we'd be at 13.35. So for these levies, we're actually going down for the rate. But, there's always a but. So we need to look at this sheet, because this is what you've seen in the past. So this is what we're requesting. So these fees are what we just talked about. And then we have the ban levy, and we have the public library levy, get some money for ag. And then these were in the last form. So the ones that are left to be put into place is the debt service levy. So without any local option sales tax, council-designated funds being contributed, we are at $1.09. Last year, we were at $1.00. But overall, we're only at 2 cents, raising the property taxes by 2 cents per thousand. So...
Okay, now help me get up the speed here. 22% of the lost, the local option sales tax, goes to?
Council-designated.
That's, no, 22% is the property tax, oh, no, it's 78. Okay, 78 property tax reduction. That's right.
So we use the 78%.
So, and we'll get into this at the next one, but basically, our local option sales tax numbers increased, which really, 78% on a bigger number is more money to apply towards the debt service levy with just what is required to be applied there.
So just as a preliminary, you would have to contribute about $30,000 to make the rate the same as this year.
Which is a far cry than what we did last year.
Yeah, last year, you did $110,000.
Yeah.
So again, we did have a tornado. We thought it would be much worse. The valuations would be much worse, so.
Therefore, you can see what buying locally does.
Right.
And that's why we preach buy locally.
Yeah, because I did change the local option sales tax revenue projection. So we originally thought, what, 3.1. Fiscal year '19 came in at 3.2 million. Department of Revenue sends out us a form, and for this fiscal year, with the November adjustment payment from the last year, we're looking at $4 million for this current fiscal year. So that helps tremendously. But to be conservative, I am, I did contact them just to say, what's this year actually looking like? Because they're always behind. So we get a better number. I'm using $3.6 million right now. If it goes down, then the levy rate will change. Then you're back to kicking in more council-designated to keep the rate the same.
We will know that, though, as we...
I'm hoping to know this week. He told me it'd be a week or two, so I'll keep on him, because we're bringing local option sales tax next week.
And that's all, that's the major part of the discussion next week, is local option sales tax?
Right.
Okay.
So does this require any action?
I just want, well, because you're gonna have to set the hearing at the next meeting for the future date, I just did want you to be in agreement that the maximum dollar amount is okay, that $12,081,000, because that's what would be published.
So on February 3rd, we'll have a resolution for you setting the public hearing with this information. So if you want anything that is on this to change, we would need to know it now.
But again, it's maximum dollars, so you could still change it. You can't change this particular form or hearing date, but when we actually get down to do it, certifying the levy, you can reduce it. You just can't exceed these numbers.
Want a motion for that?
No, I think it'll come back on a resolution for this next meeting. But, yeah, ultimately, we would hope that that resolution would be approved, and we would be then starting over on a lot of things at that point if it were not.
Not good.
Time is limited.
I think as an interjection, when we were doing the strategic planning meeting, this had came up, and with a show of hands, we had five or six out of the council, and that was at 4%. And now we're at 2.47 somewhere. So I guess what Jessica's looking for is that we're all in pretty much agreement that this is gonna pass as a resolution when it comes before us.
Because 2/3 would be five people, so five people need to approve it at this level, otherwise we're back to the drawing board.
And Mike, at that same meeting, remember, we were talking about a $400,000 deficit in the general fund, and you got that down to 111, right?
There's never been a $400,000 deficit in the general fund, or there, I should say, there was prior to us making the changes in communications. I mean, that's realistically what we were working for. But since that fiscal year '19, I think is what it was, we've been okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Not from me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Diana.
We are now at that point for public comment, and so I have to read this again. Members of the public may make comments on the item that was not on the agenda during this time. Approach the mic, state your name and address. Limit your comments to three minutes unless I authorize longer. Direct comments to the mayor and council as a whole. The mayor and councilor shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public and no actually be taking on those in order to comply with the open meeting's laws. With that said, is there any public comment?
I promise I'll be very quick. I'm Rhonda Miller. I live at 20...
I'm Rhonda Miller, I live at 2258 Knapp Avenue. I'm from Iowa River Hospice, and I wanted specifically to address, in your strategic plan this, tonight, you spoke about securing land design and construction to expand South Fifth Avenue extension from Plaza Heights Road. My request would be that you consider not South Fifth Avenue, but indeed Third Avenue, or even further away, if there needs to be a connection to Merle Hibbs Boulevard. Iowa River Hospice is located at the end of Plaza Heights Road. As you know, our work is at a very tender time of life, and we seek to keep it as quiet and peaceful as we can there. We're very concerned about the increased traffic, the safety, the noise, there's just lots and lots of concerns for us with increased traffic coming as close as Fifth Avenue would be to our property. So I, I've invited, I think all of you have been invited, some of you have taken us up on coming out to tour the area. I would encourage you to do that if you haven't, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but thanks for hearing us out.
Thank you. That's, for anybody that hasn't been out there, it is a wonderful facility. It's, it's one of the real gems that we have in this town. And I know there's been some dialogue with the developer about, out there about where to position things that will provide a little cushion. Any other public comment? It is time to adjourn at 8:22. Thank you for coming.